I'm here.
Councilmember Danis Cohen.
Present.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Okay, just a quick reminder that tonight is kind of the last council meeting of the year. We're going to have one additional meeting in two weeks, Monday, December 9th, and that's going to be a special meeting where we're going to have a presentation by the Washington Adventist Hospital on their relocation plans. After they present for about a half an hour, then we will take public hearing testimony from the public, and then we will go into work session and continue the discussion between the council and the hospital. And so all of that will take place on the 9th. We're not going to have all of the other regular pieces of a meeting. And of course, that will be in here at 7 o'clock, half an hour early, 7 o'clock. And then as far as tonight is concerned, this is the first real meeting of the new city council, which looks very much like the old city council. And as a reminder, we have made some changes to how we do the agenda. And the first thing that people are going to notice is that we've made some changes in how we take testimony on voting items on our agenda. So this evening, you'll notice that on the agenda, we have first, after proclamation, we have public testimony on the voting items that we have tonight. So we will take those in order, and we'll ask people to speak to each of those in turn. So when I get to them, we'll first call for any public testimony on Agenda Item Number Three. And after we've had any testimony on Number Three, we will take testimony on voting item Number Four. After that, we will then go to the regular public comments that we've always had in the meetings. So this is an opportunity for the council to get all of the testimony on voting items before we actually get to the item, so we can hear what the public has to say. The idea is generally that we will have had work sessions and provided to the public and to the staff the direction on what the final resolution should look like. And so if there's public testimony at the beginning of the meeting that makes for some substantial changes, we'll try and move the voting item off that agenda that evening to another date. If it's time sensitive, we will probably have to keep it on the agenda. But we're trying to group the public testimony in that way. We're going to give that a try. This is the first night that we're going to do it. So it's a bit of a change, and it might take people a little bit to get used to. But if people start to provide other testimony, I will ask them to please hold until the right time. So we'll work through this.
Did you announce that I was sworn in during the...
Oh, yes. And Councilmember Grimes reminds me that I swore him in last week on Tuesday, so that even though he couldn't be here on Monday for the swearing in for the rest of us, he has been sworn in and is duly certified as an official member of the council. So from here, I will just note that we have a... I issued a proclamation, and it's declaring that December 10th is Human Rights Day, which honors the UN adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And since 1982, Amnesty International's Tacoma Park Silver Spring Local Group has inspired city residents to work to achieve the vision of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And the group is having its Right for Rights event this... no, sorry, in two weeks, from Saturday, December 14th, from 3:00 to 5:00, at Capital City Cheesecake at 71 Carroll Avenue. And that'll give city residents the chance to write to victims of human rights abuses and their oppressors, giving hope and demanding justice. So I therefore acknowledge and proclaim the leadership of Amnesty International's Tacoma Park Silver Spring Local Group in organizing the event, and urge all of us to work for human rights throughout the world, including by attending the Right for Rights event. So we will now move to the public testimony on tonight's voting items. So I'd ask anyone who has any comments on Agenda Item Number Three, which is the resolution supporting Montgomery County Bill 1814, and that's the continuation of off-sale privilege to Class B beer and light wine licenses issued for hotels and restaurants in the city of Tacoma Park. This is an item which would basically remove the sunset provision of the bill that we asked to be passed two years ago, and there was a sunset in it. This is to remove that sunset. So if anybody would like to testify on that, now is the time to do that. And when you testify, if you can come to the podium and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes, we appreciate it.
Hello, everybody. My name is Greg Czech, and I'm the Director of Marketing at TPSS Co-op here in Tacoma Park. And I'm here to talk about beer and wine. We feel that it's time for Tacoma Park Co-op to be able to sell beer and wine. Part of our mission is to support local producers and growers, and we do that regularly with our produce and our cheese. A lot of the meat we sell is all locally produced. And in an effort to become a more full-service grocery store, we would like to be able to sell beer and wine. There are over 400 wineries in Maryland, Pennsylvania, and southern in Virginia, 140 craft breweries, a wide variety of local products, offering shoppers more choice. Wine and beer will make the Co-op more competitive. We are facing some serious competition coming to Tacoma Park. In the spring, Bus Boys &amp; Poets is going to come into right over there, out of the DC line. And they're bringing with them Glenn's Garden Market, which is a market grocery store that sells a lot of local produce, a lot of local cheese, local meats. They make their own stuff, plus they sell beer and wine. They are going to be less than one mile from our store. And studies have shown that when a store like that opens within a mile of our store, a store like ours, our business could drop off 30%, if not more. So we're a little concerned about that. We really need to be able to compete. Also, you know, a study has shown recently that wine and beer buyers actually buy more healthy food, which is actually kind of an interesting statistic, and they spend more money. So in order for us to be competitive, we feel we really need to have this so we can basically stay in business, because a 30% hit to our business would be pretty serious. It will also create a few jobs. We would have to hire some people who are well-versed in wine to come in and work at the Co-op, and we hope it will attract more shoppers to the city of Tacoma Park.
Thank you.
Questions?
We're all set.
Thanks. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to testify on this Resolution Supporting Continuation of the Off-Sale Privilege? Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Hello, my name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, your official police delegate. I'd like to say about the beer and wine, that I have a concern. The people will just buy the beer and wine, take it out and park somewhere and drink it, and then it will end up littering in parks, beer bottles on the streets, and the drunken arrest going up. That's the only thing that concerns me. I'd like to see you guys get a lot more business, but I'd like to see if we could do it without selling such brain-damaging things as too much alcohol. I'm really concerned about the youngsters coming out, you know, and getting into the beer and wine, you know, especially after spending there for a while. And I don't want to see that happen to my city. My city so far has not had that problem as bad as other cities. And I don't... So far, we've been setting an example. I want to keep it that way. So thank you very much. I don't want to see that this place become a beer and wine sales, because again, they'll be throwing the stuff around, there'll be more people begging, and there'll be more people drunk, and there'll be costing people. I don't want to see that. That's not Tacoma Park. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to testify?
Kathy Brethville, Woodland Avenue. I just want to speak in support of the Co-op on this issue, because the Co-op has supported many residents of the city. Every time we've had any kind of power outage, they've done extreme good work in order to supply food and necessary items when we've had massive power outages. And they're a part of the community, and we owe them all our support.
Thank you. I'll just point out at this point that my understanding is that the Co-op would not fall under this particular provision, because this is for establishments that serve food on premises, restaurants, and this would add the ability for them not only to serve beer and wine to their customers while they're eating, but to also purchase some and take it out. The Co-op's concern is related to this, because it's a beer and wine, but it would need a separate remedy. Anybody else wish to testify? Okay, thank you all. We will now take any public comments on Agenda Item Number Four, which is our consent agenda. And there are seven items on the consent agenda. I'll just point out that there's a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for professional consulting services associated with the Washington Adventist Hospital Certificate of Need. There's a resolution approving an amended contract with the city attorney, a resolution providing for our city council winter recess, an ordinance repealing... an ordinance awarding a contract for purchase of a large air compressor, a resolution regarding purple line co-alition, and resolutions for two appointments... for appointments for two committees, for the Residential Streetscape Task Force, and for the Emergency Preparedness Committee. If anybody has any comments on any of those consent agenda items, we would be happy to take those down.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. Just briefly on Item 4B, in the fiscal impact, it talks about how the hourly rate will increase by $25 from 150 to 175. But if you don't know how many hours the city needs, you can't really tell the full fiscal impact of the measure. So I just suggest that in the future, when items like this occur, that those figures be made available. They may be familiar to folks on the council and to the mayor, but they're certainly not familiar to the public. So having those with the proposal will help us in understanding.
Thank you. Understood. Thanks. Anybody else wish to testify? Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Yes, it's Mr. Lovelace again, the police delegate. I want to ask the people up there if they could... what they can do to help keep this campus just there now still a medical facility, because I'm constantly in need of it for one person. And there's a lot of elderly and disabled people who can't afford, health-wise even, to go all the way across the county to another hospital because of their health. They may not be able to make it. They may not survive the ambulance ride. I had that happen once, and Adventist was there to serve me. And I'd like to see if they can keep that hospital there to serve Tacoma Park and the surrounding area as it does now, so that we don't have to worry about not getting our services on time when we need it. If we have a heart attack or a stroke, or in my case, have a flare-up of the granulomatosis, they see something like that, needs immediate taking attention. And the hospital has always been there to provide it. And I thank the hospital very much, and I hope that they can find another way before they get the COA. I'd like to see them get that after they've agreed to keep this hospital a medical facility in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move along to public comments on any other matters that are not on the agenda.
Kathy Brethville again, Woodland Avenue. And this is about the police pension discussion, and also the audit of last year's budget. As you go through the audit of last year's budget and determine where you can shift to funds, look at your pensions. I'm still very concerned at the underfunding of both the police and the employees' pension funds. Normally, a pension fund should be funded at a minimum of 80%. Municipal funds, pension funds across the country are way below this amount. And part of the funding is not just your asset gain, but all your other assumptions. The other thing about your funding is that we're very proud to say we make the required contribution, but the required contribution is a minimum, just as you receive a minimum payment on your credit card. It doesn't come close to covering the big deal. And so I would like to charge the council with understanding better how they can improve the funded status of not just the police pension, but also the other employees. We have more employees than we have police. And so perhaps our new city manager will be able to determine, working with the state pension system, how our contributions are tracked, and what larger contributions could be made. Last year, I was extremely disappointed that when we had extra assets that we allocated to various projects throughout the city, not very much was put in the pension funds. So if you all are willing to take 40% or 41% or 45% of your pay, that would be great. But I don't think people can plan their pension assuming that. And that's where we are with these pension funds. So anything that can be done. The other thing I have to say about the police pension is that in the private pension world, where I worked for 25 years, independent audits of pension valuations are done on a regular basis. And I've been able to... unable in the past to determine if that was done. So I would request that the city have an independent actuarial firm come and evaluate all the assumptions that are used to value our pensions. A 7.5% interest rate, given the past 10 years of market activity, is not acceptable. It is way too high. In the past, when I was working on this, a 5% interest assumption would have been more in the ballpark, with six pushing the limit. So I need you to look at this. I need you, council, to not abdicate their responsibility to the employees of this city.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Bob Sheldon, 319 Boyd Avenue. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council, particularly the Department of Recreation and the Public Works Department for the fine job that they did moving tables. I serve on the Tacoma Foundation, and for the Beer Fest, the city did a fabulous job of moving tables for us. We couldn't have done the Beer Fest without those tables. So I want to thank the city council for that and recognize public works in the Recreation Department. I'm also a cyclist. I've been commuting to work for 40 years in DC. And here, I want to applaud Seth Grimes and Brian Keener and Erskine...
Erkin Osberg.
Austin Osberg, for their work this morning at 8 o'clock to go out and look at... I'm objecting to the bike shares that are presently located in front of the gazebo in downtown Tacoma Park. And I want, as I said, Seth, Erkin, and Brian looked at alternative locations. I have talked to every business owner who sits in front of those bike shares. They all oppose the location of those bike shares where they are. There was over $1 million spent on that gazebo, of public money. You, in my mind, desecrated that gazebo area by placing... by... you voted to approve those bike shares in that particular location. I hope that you can move quickly to have those bike shares moved to a different location, of which, as I say, Seth and Brian looked at those alternative locations today. And I assume that that will be the first step, and this will hopefully be done quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
767 Maple Avenue. I thank council for whatever you're doing for this city, and I appreciate it. I have a little program I want to share to the council, because any time I call, sometimes they give me different information, and I don't get it right. They're trying to renovate our apartment as a parked view tower, but the condition we live in is not good at all. We have a lot of videos. We have a lot of pictures. We have little babies, like six months, two years, and then they work over there. They leave tools, and then some people walk onto our... the contractors and the workers, they walk into our room when we are naked. When we are sleeping, 7 o'clock, we come from work early in the morning. They just knock our door, get out, and then we come to work. They don't have any peace at all in our home. So we thank the council that you're doing that project for us. But the situation we are in now is a bad condition, very, very bad. Because if you ask them where we... I took my daughter to a hospital. When we came in, they just came to me, "Get out. We come to work here." I have to take the little baby and go and sit in the car. And it's very cold. They don't have nowhere to put us. And they're still working there. They walk into your house any time they want. They don't give proper notice, like 24 hours or 48 hours. And we call, and they say, "City know about it." They say, "Can't you know about it?" But I know the city know about it, but they didn't allow the workers to come and kill us and kill our children. I know the city approved for you to work over there, do the construction. We like it. It's for our own good. But the situation we live in, sir, is not good at all. They make a hole from 11th floor to 5th floor. People are sick. They're coughing. People are... And then the hole go through there. They live there for maybe one month, two months, and they don't close it. I have a little boy. They break the ceiling. They put some plastic cover over there, and it's leaking. Four years ago, I was sitting on the toilet, and the water from somebody's bathroom dropped on him. I reported to them. Nobody called and said, "Maybe I'm sorry," or whatever. So city, please, I know you know about it, but I don't think you tell them to come and kill us. So please, take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
What's the... Sir?
It's 76...
The address?
7667 Maple...
7667 Maple Avenue.
7667.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could ask Mr. Kenner for an update. I assume that code enforcement is aware of what's going on and some of the complaints. And most specifically, the, you know, the entering without proper notice would be a real concern. And none of us would want to have someone just intruding into our home. What can you tell us?
Yeah. So I know that our code enforcement has been in contact with at least some of the tenants. I'm not sure if all the folks here have individually spoken to our code enforcement people, but I want to make sure that we get your information again, so that we can follow up on some of the issues. I'm not exactly sure about all the issues that our code enforcement has followed up specifically, so I just want to make sure that we get all the evidence and all the things that we can tonight, so that we can move forward with it.
We're going to pass a sheet there, and if we can get everybody's information, that way we can make sure that staff is in contact.
And Montgomery Housing Partnership does own the building, and if their contractors are not following proper procedures, I'm sure they would be interested in making that happen, too, so.
Are all these people here from the same facility?
I believe so, yes. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Mahthah Samir. I'm from 7667 Maple Avenue as well. I've been a Tacoma Parkian resident since 1999, and it's really disheartening what's happening within this building. Originally, I lived at Maple View. The owner of that building decided to keep the apartment I was living in as his own apartment. So then we got pushed up towards 116 Lee Avenue, which is the Sherwood. That apartment building got changed into condos. So then we moved to 7667. We've been living there for eight years, and the atrocities that are happening at that building is like absurd and abhorrent. I have paper documents that show that they've given us notice of construction work to be done, but not notice of to leave or vacate the unit. I have recently been diagnosed with a medical condition where it takes me longer to get ready than it would take the average person. I've also been aware that there were monies allocated to move said residents from this building, so that the renovations could be expedited and, you know, done without any problems or concerns. No such thing has happened. Realistically speaking, the majority of Maple Avenue residents are of foreign descent and may have language barrier issues, and may not be able to orate themselves to the understanding of maybe the council or someone of American descent, or not necessarily American descent, or where English is their primary language. So these people are not being represented properly, but yet our rent is being paid. You know, you can't live for free, period, in any country in the world. And we are being treated as if we've... like, as if they're doing us a favor. You know, of course, who wouldn't want to live in a renovated building that's brought up to code? But is it the fault of the residents that it was neglected for that long? A water pipe busted in my personal residence. Luckily, no one was home at the time, because it flooded the whole apartment. There could have been mortality, like, on our hands, as opposed to the mold. My mother herself has lost her sense of smell due to the level of mold that has been in that apartment. And yet now we are being pushed out of our specific apartment, which is indefinitely not fair by any means. There's a certain way to do renovations, but these renovations weren't done in the proper way. So I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to speak, but, you know, from my understanding, it was Maryland state law to give 48 hours' notice for a resident of any unit to vacate said unit. And not one time were we given notification.
Again, Mr. Kenner, I would just ask that, you know, obviously, this is a very serious situation, and use your discretion. Maybe we need to ask MHP to come to the table. We all sit down and talk this through and get it resolved quickly, because if it's going on again tomorrow, it's, again, a bad situation.
How long... how long has... have you all been under siege?
Since slightly before October.
Before October?
Six months. Six months. And the property is not... the problem is not MH Housing Project.
Can you come up to the...
Can you come up to the podium and speak?
Yeah.
Pardon me. The problem is actually Equity Management. Equity Management is not doing the proper, because all of this documentation is communication from Equity Management. Equity Management is not giving us our proper notification, nor being of a polite nature. They speak in very rude and ghetto tones, and besides that, when you ask, "What's the issue?", they blame Hamel builders. When you ask Hamel builders, they blame Equity Management. Who's to blame? Somebody has to take the fault.
MHP has contracted with both of those organizations, so I think they're the proper ones for us to talk with. Equity Management is a contractor to Montgomery Housing Partnership, as is the Hanson Contractor themselves.
And actually, from the leasing office, they told me specifically that there's nothing we can do for you, you need to go to speak to the city council, or maybe you need to hire legal, you know, legal.
Representation.
Representation, pardon me, to handle whatever situ, and we literally, in our apartment, as cold as it is right now, have not had heat since two Fridays ago. We go for heat by a small space heater, and there's multiple people in the building who don't have heat.
Have you spoken to anyone in our housing office?
Yes, we spoke to Ms. Linda Walker, and she told us, because we got a notice for quit and vacate, so pretty much an eviction notice, but through their legal office for whatever other issues. I don't want to encompass everyone else, even though the core issue was, there was, they, the leasing office lady didn't appreciate a certain tone that was given to her by a resident who lives in my house. I've been walked in on topless. They asked me to leave, I was getting ready, I was changing my top, walked in on topless. My brother was walked in on butterball. She, the leasing office lady told me, after she knocks once, she has ten seconds, we have ten seconds before she enters our unit.
The notice to vacate, was it a thirty-day notice?
No, two weeks in the winter.
Two weeks.
My mother has been a resident of that building for eight years and never has paid her rent late or in half increment payments. She pays her rent on time. We're well-liked in the building, we don't bother anyone.
And when you spoke to Ms. Walker, did she give you an opportunity to file a cult complaint so you can have a stay of the eviction?
Well, what we did was, we gave our side of the story, so to speak, to, I think her name is Jennifer, I'm not sure, she's African-American, she has a short haircut.
Jean?
Jean. We gave it to Jean, she took the notes, and Ms. Walker hasn't gotten back to us yet because we've been just looking for another residence to be at. It's, it's really disheartening to be a resident of Tacoma Park, and, you know, I used to be a very optimistic person, very optimistic person, and now I'm very cynical, because it's based on your socioeconomic status that you get treated in a certain way.
And I would just, for the record, say that, you know, the tenants of 7610 Maple Avenue, which is also managed by Equity Management, has expressed concerns also about the way they're treated by that company.
So, thank you for coming tonight and bringing this to our attention, and if you just make sure that we get all the information we need from folks on that pad, did you, you got it all okay? And somebody will be, somebody will be following up very shortly.
How many times have you called here?
Here, because, you know, not knowing that we should have came here, like, me, myself, I like to keep things, like, out of, just to see if you, you know, just to see if you can just respectfully talk with one another and accomplish whatever problem, like, the rectification of whatever problem, if that's a word, of whatever problems that one may have, but that wasn't feasible to them. They didn't, and then they don't want to be bothered. I was told, don't, and then now we have a gag order, so to speak, but not through court, to not even communicate with the leasing office or any official of the building, so we can't even ask for our heat to be fixed.
Well, I mean, your heat will be turned on. I mean, somebody from the city is going to contact this management company, and they're going to do something. And we will talk to Moses Wilds, who coordinates Commissioner Landlord Tended Affairs, to see if we can do something about staying here, your eviction. Okay, so, we're gonna work on it.
And also, the entry of the apartments is obviously a major issue.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's, we have photographic evidence of how they've let the, before Equity Management became the property management, when the water pipe busted in our house and destroyed all of my mother's furniture, thank God, nobody was in the house to die from drowning because none of us swim, you know? What we were given was two free months of rent, which doesn't even equate to the cost of half of her furniture. I know there's going to be a depreciated value, but let's be serious, like, and it's all, and then they jov, like, they jovially laugh at us when we complain about whatever is going on. How can you speak to people of this nature?
And this has been going on since October 1st or mid-October, or?
They started renovations in September.
September?
Yes, and, you know, there's like no respect for privacy at all. We're not trying to block people from doing the renovations. If you give me proper notice, you won't even have, I won't even be there to open the door when you knock on it. You'll be there, able to do your renovations as you may, as you want to, but when you never get notification, and then, when I was released from the hospital, I was released from the hospital after seven days with an inflamed brain. The leasing office agent clapped in my ears to get up and get out of my house in that tone, with no notification. And I have medical documentation proving said condition.
Thank you, thank you for coming. I wish, I wish we'd heard from you all sooner.
I'm sorry, I have a question I want to ask, because they walked into my bedroom when I was laying down in the morning twice, and my wife was naked when she came from bathroom, the workers walk into her, I filed a report, no one, since then, no one said nothing to me. And I told them, if they didn't do nothing to me, I'm not going to pay my rent. So, this month, I didn't pay my rent. What objection are you going to give to me?
Now, when you filed a report, with whom did you file the report? With Equity or here?
The management, not here, the management.
The management, okay.
Yeah, the last time, about, on the 22nd, I came from hospital with my baby daughter, and then people started walking into my house. So, I was shocked, I didn't get a notice, so I told them to get out. One person told me she going, he's going to fix the light. I asked him, "Are you going to make noise?" He said, "No, it's going to take me thirty minutes." I said, "Okay, do it." And then when the door opened, I saw people walking into, so I don't like it. I called police, Tacoma Police, they didn't show up. So, I came down and stood there, and it took there, like, maybe, it took a while before I saw two police cars pull in front of the building and just left. I was downstairs. I called back again, and I said, "I call police." But nobody showed up. The operator told me, they said that the owner is in the building. I said, "The owner is in the building, so what?" I called the police, "You don't know what is happening to me, so why are you going to tell that the owner is in the building?" No, they didn't show, because actually, we have accents, we have accents. Sometimes people do not understand as well, but sometimes, when you speak and have accents, people don't care. But we speak multiple languages, you know? We are humble, I've been living here for nine years. Me, if you check my own record from where I come from, I don't have no bad record. For every country I live, no bad record. I've been living here more, almost fourteen years in the US, I have no bad record, but the way they treating us, it hurts me so much that why they have to treat us like that? I have to carry my, my little baby in my hand, why? If you see my children's room, why? My children's ask me all the time, why we living this like that?
Good evening, City Council. I would like to continue on how Equity Management has been mistreating us at 7667. There was an altercation between me and bargain movers that they had hired, and they had attacked me, dragged me out of my house, and gave me a concussion, where I had woke up and not known what had happened. One of their Equity Management managers was right in front of the scene and did nothing to stop it, did nothing to defuse it, and changes up her story during court. We had a recent hearing, and I don't know if you noticed earlier, but there was, there was a young female here who works at the Tacoma Park Rec, who plays, you know, who has good relationships with the children here, and she had about three, four bags on her. I don't know if you saw, I don't know if you've seen that, but we have been evicted. It's Thanksgiving weekend, and we can't even eat turkey at our own home. When, when I tried to get in contact with the police department, I would like to continue on how, how he was talking about the Tacoma Park Police, I can't get a police report on what had happened on November 13th, 2013. Sergeant Smith said herself she refuses to speak to me. I don't know what kind of relationship this building and, and the police department have, but it is, it's insane. They're working, they're, they're work, I don't know how to say it right, but something, something's going on between them two, and it's just not right.
I, I don't, I don't know what that would be, but I'd invite you to talk with the chief who's sitting right there.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure, I mean, obviously, I know that there's a lot of emotion that's being felt here, and I just want to make sure that we get all the informations, that we're able to respond, because, I mean, you know, I know probably everybody's got their own individual experience, and so, I just want to make sure that we're able to address each one of them, because each one of them sounds a little bit different than the previous one. So, there's just, sounds like a lot of complexity, a lot of issues, so I just want to make sure that we get everybody's name, information, and situation, so that we can accurately look at it.
When I had called Equity Management on the incident, on the altercation that had happened, they told me to take responsibilities for your own action. I said, "How can you say that if I got attacked at my own home, when, when another man told me, 'I'm gonna beat you in front of your mother and, and your, and your sister.'" I'm the only man in the house. I, I can't, I can't let, how can someone say that to you? And, and then they say, "Take responsibility for your own actions." That, I say, "What do you mean by that?" Well, I was told by my employees that you was, you attacked them first. Her, her, one of their employees from Equity Management has been changing her story, and I can't get an official document to, that proves that, from this police department. Thank you for, thank you for my time.
Right, and I'm sure the city manager's gonna look into all of that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
I'm her mother and his mother. My name's Elsa. I was living in Tacoma Park, 1999. I love to live in Tacoma Park, but the way they treat us, the way, even though my son, he's young, he tells his story, or she tells her story. I have three kids, the younger girl, she was with backpack also, she's my daughter, three of them, they were born here, United States. I was living 1999, since 1999 Tacoma Park. Equity Management, even myself, I never talk to them. I pay on time, I'm in-house, I don't have time, anything, you know, in my life, enjoy or something. They give me by his lawyers, string order, "Don't come to the office, don't talk to anything." That's why they told me. I was, I didn't say anything, even though I said to my kids, you know, that, like, they are as young, you know, "Shut your mouth, go ahead, don't say anything." That's why I told them, you know, to my kids. I didn't say anything. They create everything, you know, what they say, you know? Even the lady, she's in the front, the office, she been three months, she doesn't know us. I've been with 1767 Maple Avenue, Parkview, eight years, since nineteen, I mean, since 2005, you know? Before I was 116 Lee Avenue, Mr., he knows me. But I don't know. They told me, you know, December 2nd, they have to leave, within two weeks, is that fair? The winter time, Thanksgiving, Christmas coming. I'm gonna go to work, I'm gonna lose my job, how I'm gonna pay my bill, they destroy my credit. The looking where, where this time, within two weeks. Destroy my life. Thank you so much, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ibrahim Fasha, I live on Maple Avenue. Mine's is more about the Tacoma Park Police Department rather than Equity Management, because I don't live at that apartment. But I don't know if there's a correlation between the two stories, but the Tacoma Park Police Department, at least with my dealings with them recently, has been completely unprofessional with the young residents of this area, especially Maple Avenue. Recently, the police have been arresting and detaining males around this area for simply walking down the street. My brother was recently detained by two police officers for walking from driving school for no apparent reason. This, in a way, this does correlate with the story that they were telling, because one of the police officers told, when, when that, when that happened, he called, he called his friends, because they were all in distress and they were all emotional, and one of the police officers told them that, that they were Maple Avenue kids and they weren't going to go anywhere in life. I mean, these kids are, these kids aren't thugs, they're honor students. They were honor students in high school and they're in college right now. And I went to go speak to the company commander, I'm not sure if that's the company commander, and actually, I know that's not him, I went to speak to a supervisor at the Tacoma Park Police Station, and he, the way he spoke to me was completely rude and disrespectful. He, he tried to lay it on that I didn't know all the facts about the situation. I mean, when, when I'm even walking down the street, I get, I get dirty looks from the police for no, for no reason. I guarantee it has something to do with the color of my skin. He made it difficult for me to, to obtain a complaint form, and that, that it was going to make a difference anyways. They act as if they can do whatever they want without any accountability. And a lot of the, a lot of the residents of this area, coming from middle-class and middle-class and even below backgrounds, some areas on the street, they, the police feel that they can do whatever they want because they don't, because they feel they don't have a voice, because, because their socioeconomic status. So, I just, I just wanted to see if there was some way that they can be accountable for not acting in a professional manner. Thank you.
And I just want to make sure, again, that I'm gonna come down as soon as, as soon as sort of everybody's finished, because I want to make sure that I get everybody's individual issues so that I can get it straight. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mohammed Fasha from 7600 Maple Avenue. That's my brother, and I have the similar, I have like a big problem with the police in this area, and I wouldn't really have a big problem with the police, but I expected that if I had a problem with the police, I could go to the higher-ups and things would be fixed, like, they should put them in their place, because they're doing things that aren't right. So, as, as you said, what happened was, I'm walking from driving school on Holt Place in Philadelphia, and there's a police car circling the block, and so, I noticed that, you know, he's, this happened to me many times, but this, but, but, but this happened to me many times, so I didn't think about it. He's circling, he's slowing down, looking at me, they do this all the time, I didn't think about it much. But then, another cop comes around, circles again, then the same cop comes around for a second time, he slows down, and he breaks in the middle of the street where there's no stop sign. where there's no stop sign. I'm continuing walking in daylight, like, 2:00 PM from driving school, and the cop, I walk around the corner, the cop zooms up next to me and asks me, "Where do you live?" I ask him, "Why are you stopping me and asking me where I live?" He gets out the car, and on the street in Holt Place, they're doing construction. So, one side of the street, there's no sidewalk, because there's a part of construction there, and the other side of the street doesn't have a sidewalk. So, the police, I'm talking, so he gets out the car, he's like, "I'm not any other," I'm like, I'm telling him, "I'm not gonna tell you where I live, you can't just stop me and ask me where I live." So, he gets out the car, and he says, "I'm not anybody, I'm a police officer, and I asked you where you live." I say to him, "Did I do anything illegal? Am I being detained?" He, "Of course, I didn't," so he said, "No." "No," and I said, "All right, then I'm going to leave, because I didn't do anything illegal." That officer, after I said those things, am I being, did I do anything illegal? Am I being detained? He stopped, and he kind of, I guess, let me go, but then, his, another officer, who was circling earlier, zoomed up behind him and said, "No, wait, stop. Right now, you're actually standing in the street where there's no sidewalk, and it's illegal for you to be staying in the street." First of all, when the cops were coming, I was walking on the curb, and they called me into the street to talk to them. Now that I'm in the middle of the street to talk to them, they tell me that I'm, that they're gonna cite me for standing in the street. Okay, I don't know if I look like a criminal, if I was wearing these jeans, a white shirt, and some red running shoes. So, I asked them, like, why they're following me, why they're stopping me, and I think that, like, why are they just stopping me? So, of course, I think, "Oh, they're just cops, you know, they're just being petty," like, but this doesn't make any sense. So, I tell them, "I'm gonna go file a complaint." I come here to file a complaint right after it happens, and I think it should be easy. I talked to their people, and they should tell them that they shouldn't be following people down the street. So, they set me up with the supervisor, I talked to the supervisor, I tell them what happened. And he says that, he says that, "Oh, the cops are stopping people in that area because they've had a lot of burglaries." And so, I'm asking him, "Okay, so how come there's plenty of, I happen to be the only person of color walking down that street? How come you didn't stop the guy walking his dog? How come you didn't stop the old man? How come you drove by all of them, stopped me, asked me where I live, and all these things?" So, the supervisor's like, "All right, I'll look into it, I'll give you a call back." And that was about two months ago. He never gave me a call back. So, once I wanted to get back in touch with the offices, I came back here multiple times. "Can I speak to this guy, is he here?" "No, he's not here, no, he's not here." "Can I speak to him?" "No, he's not gonna call you back," whatever. So, I'm like, "Okay, I'll file a complaint by myself." I guess it's the same sergeant that my brother talked to, but when I asked the sergeant for a complaint form, he has, he just treats you like you're nothing. He rolls his eyes, gives me a form. I asked him if he can answer some questions, some basic questions about the law. I'm like, "Like, what are the laws about doing this, doing that?" He's like, "I'm not gonna answer any of your questions, I don't have time." Like, he just doesn't want to talk to anybody. I talked to the police officers, they don't want to answer any questions. They like, they're aware of what they're doing, and they don't, they don't want to talk about it. And it's a big problem going around with these local cops that patrol these streets. They just follow me down the street. Every time I walk home, they slow down, they look at me for no reason. And I come here, and I say, "The supervisors, the sergeants, the chiefs, they should be able to do something about that, they should tell them not to do it." But they look at me as if I'm a criminal. When I have no criminal background, I'm a college student, I didn't do anything, I've never been cited, I never even had a citation. And now, like, every time I walk down the street, I guess they remember me as the kid who complained, and they're just following me down the street wherever I go. Thank you.
How many times have you been stopped?
I've been stopped, I've been officially stopped once. But that was because, I guess, in the area that I was in, they told me that, like, most of the time, I'm walking down where I live, Maple Avenue, I walk off, get off the bus, get back home, so they're not gonna stop me when I'm in my own street. So, I even asked them, "Are you stopping me because I'm in a neighborhood that I don't appear that I live in?" And so, every, so whenever, you know, you go up to the streets where the houses cost $500,000 at Tacoma Park, is when they think it's a problem, and when they want to stop you and see what they're doing. And that's a big problem, that I don't understand why nobody cares about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lovelace?
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. One thing I'd like to do is I wish everybody here a happy Thanksgiving. And I want to wish Sandra, I want to wish Keisha Johnson and Doris Thompson, my healthcare workers, and also Panama, my healthcare workers. I want to wish all of them a happy and joyous Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I want to tell people out there, be very thankful for what you've got this Thanksgiving. A lot of people don't even have that. Think about the people who are losing their food stamps and are losing their healthcare. Think about that, and see what we can do to help them out. Also, you want to think about getting away from guns. Guns are nothing but a killing machine. They don't serve any other purpose. And it makes some other family cry in tragedy. Some of these families now are not gonna have their kid for Thanksgiving. They're gonna have an empty chair, an empty plate there, think about that. Try to make our Thanksgivings much better, and be very grateful for what you've got, like I am. Try to dedicate the day for peace. See what you can do to dedicate your life to peace that day. And also, I want to wish David Levine, who is turning 70 years old today, a happy birthday. He has loved me for 30 years now, 30 years. He's in a nursing home over at Hebrew Home, and I want to wish him a happy Thanksgiving and a happy birthday. Okay, David, thank you very much, Cuddles, that's Nickname. Okay, well, I hope to see you. And I want to wish everybody out there, good holiday, because next week, you're only having half a meeting, and I want to wish everybody out there a Thanksgiving and a Christmas you'll never forget, a wonderful one. See what we can do. And another thing you can do is pledge to vote. Maybe tomorrow or the day after. Go down and get your voting registration kits. All you 16-year-olds do the same thing. And all you people who are old enough ordinarily, I want you guys to get out there and think about voting. That's one way of proving how thankful you are for what you've got. You want to keep it, you're not aware of it until you lose it. Because until you lose it, it's not good. I remember the days I had both hands, a carpenter. I thought I was losing everything, but I'm looking at the things that I have, and I have not lost. I have a lot yet, that I have. You know, I didn't lose everything. I'm still able to do my demonstrations and set an example for the children, and also set an example for the fellow adults like me. And I want people to think about that. Think about what we can do to work for peace. Think how we can help the poor and the homeless this day. Also, remember, Thanksgiving is not a day to act like a turkey. You know what they'll do on you? They cut the head off, they stuff you full of stuffing, and throw you in the oven, and then eat you. So, don't act like a turkey. Serve the turkey. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Mokta Samir again, from 7667. I apologize, I happened to get a little emotional earlier, being that it's, you know, affecting my complete life and pretty much ripping my family apart. But I'd also like to mention, besides language barriers, people fear coming forward so that they don't become a target as well, you know. I mistakenly would speak to the leasing office thinking they would rectify certain situations, being that, as my mother had stated before, I was born here, I can orate myself, okay, so to speak. And I've actually even been sent by several residents of 7667 Maple Avenue. Not that I'm going to do what they told me per se, but I came here in all plans, as I ran into Mr. Smith last week. I came here with all plans to discuss my issues. But it's really, like, disheartening for other people to have their voices silenced because they feel like they're either gonna be a target or their voice doesn't matter. Last, I checked, you know, the where in Tacoma Park, which is a great city, that's, you know, I fell in love with Tacoma Park from the time we first came here in 1999. But at the end of the day, I thought this was America, and we were supposed to, like, be able to have discourse and resolve our issues in a bipartisan type of way. I just don't, I just don't understand.
Right, and I certainly hope, Suzanne, as we look at this, that it seems more than just coincidence that the eviction is coming at this point, and we do have rules against retaliatory evictions?
Yes, we've, I do know that. We will be following up on this. I only heard a small amount about this before this meeting, but we will need to look into it, and we certainly understand, and we do not tolerate retaliatory action.
Unfortunately, the law doesn't support us a whole lot on that, as you know.
We will do what we can do.
They've also requested that we continue to pay rent towards, until the end of our lease. How does somebody of a certain socioeconomic status, she's not a lawyer, she's not a doctor, she can't afford two rents, you know? She doesn't want to have a bad rental history credit, which she has never had since she came to this country in 1984.
If she's asked, if she's asked to leave, she doesn't have to continue to pay through the end of the lease?
But that's not what this paper that they've given me states. It states that we're to pay our rent until June.
My lease is gonna be ended in June.
That's not correct. People are gonna get back to you and deal with this. This whole thing is a mess. And I'm sure that you'll hear more from the Housing Department.
The property management does targeted harassment, so they can, if you speak up for yourself or anything, then they'll claim harassment upon themselves, and I'm talking about speaking in this tone of voice.
The more people that you have to corroborate that story,
Yes, there's multiple people.
The better, and again, I think it's important that we have Montgomery Housing Partnership at the table as we talk about these things, since it is their contract that is you're making these allegations about.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming back and speaking about the retaliation. It's, I hate to say this, but it doesn't live in my life. I never even considered that was a possibility until you just spoke it, that if you come forward and speak about something, you're gonna get zapped, one way or the other. Thank you so much.
It's a big fear, and it's a very reasonable fear for why many tenants don't come forward when they have problems.
Yeah, it just, you know, it's probably right in front of my face. I just, it's not something I observe so very well. And the three gentlemen, were you the three gentlemen that helped me with Mr. Lovelace last week?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Thank you so much. I got a lot of help from these three guys. I can't see so far out there.
Thank you all for bringing this to our attention, and staff will be coordinating and getting back with you very soon. Anybody else have any public comments? Okay, thank you all very much. We will now move to council comments. Councilmember Mele.
I'm not gonna go first. After all that, I'm not going first.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a simple request. If the city manager, when you reach out to the people who signed up, if you'd make special effort to reach out to people who maybe didn't speak out tonight, it might feel more comfortable speaking to you one-on-one or staff one-on-one or in small groups, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Dennis Cohen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And city manager, will you keep us updated on, actually, on both stories? Both will really help, will really, really help. Because I'm like, you know, it doesn't happen here, but it is. So, I'm not a happy camper, but I'm gonna give you some happy statements. It's a thankful kind of a week, and it's hard to follow all that, but I'm gonna do it anyhow. And what do I have to be thankful for? That question makes everyone shrink into their seats at Thanksgiving dinner, when the hostess or the host says, "What do you have to be thankful for?" I'm thankful that I have such a table and friends and family to share it with. I'm thankful for so many things, more than the mayor will give me time for, but here it goes. I'm thankful, I'm thankful to live in Tacoma Park with so many caring, supportive people, with such fine prayers and good wishes. I'm thankful I live on Sherman Avenue with more supportive people who have taken such great care of me over these last, like, nine months. I'm thankful for a great city staff who have answered my many crazy questions. I'm actually thankful to still be standing tonight and for many nights to come. I'm thankful for being re-elected at council. It keeps me going, doing the job. And I'll make sure, I'll help follow up with this business of the Realty Company the best of my ability. It's shocking to me, I'm like, don't live that way. I don't understand people who do. I'm thankful for my reelection committee. Last week, everybody else thanked their reelection committees, and I had other bazillion people to thank, so I didn't. I'm thankful for Jeff Tronzo and Herman Goodyear, who pull no punches when answering questions that I might ask and making comments and calling a spade a spade. I'm thankful to Claire Garman, webmaster extraordinaire. I'm thankful to Howard Cohen, who can edit anything to a meaningful and extraordinary, especially what I write. I'm thankful to Michelle Morgan, the best graphic artist ever, who patiently will move a star or a whole bunch of stars and any copy that I ask her to move. I can be a bit of a bothersome little person every so often. I'm thankful for Perky Linda Colco, who along with Michelle, kept me going during the campaign. All of these get gold stars, but especially Buddy Daniels gets a really big gold star for being the one who put up all the signs around the community center, and then, in the dark of night, took them down. I really appreciated that, it's tough. I'm also thankful for Jack Cohen. It says Daniels Cohen, so Buddy Daniels is the brother, Jack Cohen is the husband. He gets the biggest gold star of all for taking me, driving me everywhere and taking such tender care of me. There are no words that can thank him for all that he's done. And I just want you all to remember, and maybe this, I should have started with this tonight, that when the power of love overcomes the love of power, the world will be at peace. So, have a wonderful and thankful, and thankful holiday, and thanks for listening to me.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. I'll express my thanks also to everyone who came out to speak or just to witness the meeting this evening. It's important for us to hear directly from you about the everyday experiences that you're having, whether in your housing or with the police department or anything else. And I know it's not always easy or certainly not convenient to come to the meeting, so I know we all appreciate it very much. I have two things to mention. One is Mr. Bob Sheldon spoke earlier. I want to thank the city manager, Erkan Ozberg, from the Planning Department, Paul DeMayo, who is a Montgomery County contractor working on bicycle programs, for coming out this morning to do a walk-around with a number of residents to look at potential alternative bike-share locations rather than the, to which the bike-share station at the gazebo in Old Tacoma could be relocated. So, I assume we'll have a discussion about that and think about ways to go forward and bring this to council colleagues and so on as an outcome of the discussion. I do have a question about an item that's on the consent agenda. I don't want to pull it or anything. We have a resolution joining the Purple Line Corridor Coalition. I'm wondering how we would participate in the coalition? Would a city staffer take part in whatever meetings there are?
Yes, they would have, as far as I can tell, I've met with-
Yes. As far as I can tell, I've met with the staff of the Purple Line Coalition, and they have undertaken a lot of research, so it's an opportunity for us to get the research from them. And then, we get to share with them a lot of the specifics about Tacoma Park, and what we would like to see in terms of protecting our small businesses along the corridor, and that kind of thing. So I think it's simply an opportunity to kind of be in on the planning and the efforts. There's not really a formal membership role.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I was not planning to make any comments tonight, but now that I've heard what we've heard in the last few minutes, I need to respond. First of all, thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate it. And to say, to express my outrage at hearing what the experiences are of the people that are living in 7667 Maple Avenue. I appreciate, but I know that I don't know all the facts. There's probably a lot more information that I, as a city council member, would have to have in order to be able to make a proper judgment about what I've been hearing about. But my concern is that a situation like this should never have to come to a level where you are reduced to being in the situations that you have been reduced to, and are being obligated to come to us at the city council to find some hope of satisfaction and relief for the awfulness that you've been apparently dealing with now for at least two months, with things looking like they're getting worse rather than better. I don't need to defend city staff on all this, because I'm not sure to what extent city staff has done anything wrong. But the important thing is that you should know that the city staff is going to respond, and as fast as they possibly can, to see if they can do whatever they can under the law to rectify this situation. My longer-term concern is whether or not we have enough capacity on our staff to be able to head off or to some of these problems before they get to the level of severity that they have in your case. Because it's just unbelievable that in our city, in this day and age, with a level of sophistication that you, as tenants, have, you're not dumb people by any stretch of the imagination, that this sort of situation has been able to exist for as long as it has, and for people to be without heat, to be physically confronted, and to be invaded without proper notice, it just seems, it's hard to believe. So thank you for coming tonight, and I have every confidence that city staff is going to deal with this quickly. All of us up here, I'm sure I can say this, will want to make sure that that happens, and we will work together on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you for all of you for coming out. It's unbelievable that these things that you guys have had to go through for this extended period of time, city staff will do everything possible to make sure that these issues are resolved. And if need be, they will put you in contact with legal counsel, pro bono counsel, so you will not have to pay for anything, that will help you navigate the legal system. But this type of treatment is just unacceptable. No one should have to go through not having heat during the winter. No one should have their personal space be invaded while someone is trying to do improvements. The city has policies in place that are supposed to protect tenants, and it's obvious that this management company is not following them. So we will work to help fix these issues for you. This past week, I had the opportunity to attend the groundbreaking for the new athletic field at Washington-Aventis University. I want to thank President Spence and Dr. McKenzie for the invitation. I hope this is an opportunity for the community to be able to use this new field through some type of reservation system. But I would like to, once again, thank the administration for being so kind, and allowing me to give a few remarks at their new ballfield. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just say that I appreciate people coming to the council with their concerns. I'm sorry that it took you so long to come here, and the problems have escalated to the point they have, but that's probably not your fault. It's more our fault. It isn't more open, and we don't reach out more. But, you know, we heard two huge issues tonight. One with the apartment and the equity management, and the other with the problems with the police department. And I trust the city manager will give this top priority, get it, address the situation, and get back to us and the residents themselves, and see what, if anything, we need to do to correct the situations. Thank you.
And I'll...
Excuse me. And also, I did want to offer that, you know, if there's anything, absolutely anything I can do to assist in getting this resolved, give me a call.
And I'll add that, again, that I concur with the remarks of my colleagues up here about what you've had to be going through, and my hope that with some help from our staff, we can rectify this situation, and get things where they need to be, and help you deal with this situation in a way that is fairer to you, and will provide you with what you need to go forward, and try and make sure that this doesn't happen again, not only to you, but to other people in the city. I do also just want to let people know that I went to my first meeting today of the Maryland Sustainable Growth Commission. I'd let people know that I was recently named to this. The commission meeting meets about every two months, and it was a very interesting meeting today. I got a lot of good information. This group essentially sees itself as the kind of guardians of smart growth and sustainability in the state. It brings together a lot of people, both from the private sector, from business, from nonprofits, from environmentalists, from various state departments, and some elected officials. And it also provided me with a heads-up on a number of things about funding, particularly out of the Housing and Community Development Department, and their smart growth programs, and what we, as the commissioner, are advocating for in the state budget coming up this next legislative session, and some ways that we can potentially take advantage of some core smart growth funding sources. They also provided some briefing and information on new TIF, or tax increment financing, economic financing tool. I know Councilmember Schultz and the city manager got some information on that at the legislative conference. I don't know whether what I got is different or in addition to it, but I have some additional information, and some additional resources that might be handy. So just a number of things that came about in this meeting today, which was in Leonardtown, which provided a very different experience, since as I went to and from the meeting, I was driving through St. Mary's County, and most of the people and vehicles that I saw on the road were Amish in buggies, and horse-drawn farm equipment. And it was a very different world, and I was never more than 60 miles from Tacoma Park, so it was very interesting to see.
Your original hybrid vehicle, yes.
Yes. And I saw evidence of that hybrid left on the street. I think that takes care of council comments. Does the city manager have any comments?
Again, I also just want to thank everybody for coming down, and just want to make sure that if you feel like you have not been heard in some way, or you have not gotten your information to Suzanne, or to myself, I just want to make sure that that does happen, because we do want to follow up. Thank you all very much.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do is, since we're running late, and it's 10 of 9, I'd like to take a very short break, and then we'll go forward with our presentations. So we'll be back and start up again at 9 o'clock.
Yes, I just wanted to let Mr. Kenner know that at the break, I received two phone calls from residents of 7667 who said that they had similar experiences, but they were unwilling to come forward with that because of their fear of retaliation by the management. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Seaman. We'll now, sorry, we're a little behind, but we will now move to our first presentation, and that is from our auditors and from our finance director on the comprehensive annual financial report. So, welcome, and do you want to introduce folks? Whoever's going to introduce, please do so.
Good evening. I'm Dan Kenny, partner with Kovan Resnick, and with me is Matt Stangroom. He's the manager. We're here to present the June 30, 2013 financial statements for the city of Tacoma Park. You should have in front of you hard copies of the independent auditor's report. Then after that, Matt is going to go through our slide presentation. Then you will have a letter on internal control over financial reporting, and then a letter, it's referred to as the 114 letter. So the first item I'd like to go over is the independent auditor's report. There was a new auditing standard that came out last year, and so your report looks a little bit different from last year. The report now is broken down. It has subtitles. It talks about management's responsibility. Basically, it says the same type of information. If you were to look in last year's report, in the first paragraph, the second, the last sentence, all it said was the financial statements are the responsibility of management. Now in this paragraph here, you can see it expands it a little bit more. It's the same type of responsibility, but it's just letting the reader know of that responsibility. And then our responsibility, under auditor's responsibilities, there are three paragraphs. Basically, the same type of information. The first paragraph talks about our audit being conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. The second paragraph talks about evidence that we obtained. In the last paragraph, this is something new, and indicates that the audit evidence we've obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our opinions. And then in the opinion indicates that the financial statements are presented fairly for the year ended June 30. And this is known, previously it was called an unqualified opinion. It didn't say it, but that's what it was referred to as. This is an unmodified opinion. It's the same thing. It's otherwise a clean opinion that you've received for your year-end audit. The next two paragraphs are similar to last year's. You have RSI information, required supplementary information, that the GASP wants the financial statements to include. That talks about there what our responsibility is with respect to that. And then when you have other information surrounding your budgetary schedules and your combining statements, we also have to note that. And if you go to the next item on the last page, once again, it talks about the budgetary schedules and our responsibility, and then it also talks about the introductory and statistical sections. And because your audit was conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, we've also issued our report on internal control, which we're going to go over after Matt goes over the slides. So, Matt, what's your one?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Dan mentioned, I'm Matt Stangroom. I'm a manager of Kovan Resnick on the 2013 financial statement audit of the city. And I'm going to briefly go over a few of the financial statement highlights that occurred in our fiscal year 2013. The first slide indicates the change in the primary government total net position over the past three years. As you can see, it steadily increased. 2012 net position was 34.69 million as compared to 2013, which was 38.01 million. That increase is mainly attributable to the $3.3 million net income that the city earned, or as it's referred to in the financial statements, the change in net position. And as I go through the slides, it'll further break down the change in the net position. So one of the components of that change is the primary government revenue. And as you can also see, the revenues have increased over the past three years for the city. In 2012, total primary government revenues was 23.66 million, which increased to 24.43 million in 2013. This is approximately a $770,000 increase. The next slide further breaks down the revenues of the city into specific programs or functions of the city. The first category is property taxes. Property taxes increased from 2012 of 11.67 million to 2013 of 12.1 million. And this increase is mainly attributable to a reassessment of real property tax within the city. That assessment increased resulting in an increase of property tax revenue. The next category is grants and contributions. Grants and contribution revenue increased from 5.02 million in 2012 to 6.23 million in 2013. And this increase is mainly attributable to additional tax duplication payments from Montgomery County, mainly for police services, for road maintenance, park maintenance. And there's also some additional grant revenue received within that category. The next category is charges for services, and this category decreased from 2012 to 2013. In 2012, total revenue was 3.8 million. In 2013, revenue was 3.23 million. And this decrease was mainly attributable to a decrease in speed camera revenue during the year, which was a result of a change in state law prohibiting assessment of late fees on those speed camera tickets. And the final revenue category is intergovernmental, which also decreased from $3 million in 2012 to $2.8 million in 2013. And this decrease was mainly attributable to a decrease in income taxes collected by the city, and also a decrease in state highway user tax collected by the city. This slide indicates the total primary government expenses and a comparison over the last three years. In 2012, total primary government expenses was 20.61 million, which increased to 21.01 million in 2013. This is approximately a $400,000 increase in total expenses. And a further breakdown of the expense increase is what this slide indicates, the expenses by city functions. The first category is housing and community development. These expenses increased from 2012 to 2013. In 2012, total expenses was 1.47 million, and in 2013, total expenses was 1.55 million. And this increase is mainly a result of recommendations of the Tacoma Junction Task Force, which resulted in additional personnel and contractual expenditures incurred by the city. The next category is public safety, and public safety pretty much remained consistent with the previous year. There's only about a $10,000 increase. The next category is public works. This category increased from 2012 to 2013. Total public work expenditures in 2012 is 5.11 million, which increased to 5.33 million in 2013. And this increase is mainly attributable to contractual costs incurred for projects around the city, such as improvements to the community center, stormwater management projects that occurred within the city. The next category is general government, and these expenditures increased from 3.53 million in 2012 to 3.7 million in 2013. And this increase is mainly attributable to an increase in community grants that was received by the city, also an increase in unemployment taxes, and a new administrative fee assessed on the pension plan of the city. And the final category is recreation and culture. These expenses also increased from 2.61 million in 2012 to 2.74 million in 2013. And this increase is mainly attributable to personnel costs in the recreation department and also in the library. The library opened up for some additional hours on Sunday, which resulted in some additional costs under this category. I'll turn it back over to Dan, who will address the other two letters.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, so as I mentioned, the report is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. As a result of that, we issued our report on internal control over financial reporting. And you'll see there are two paragraphs, the internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. And basically, this indicates that you don't have any material weaknesses in your internal control. You also don't have any significant deficiencies. And under compliance and other matters, our tests resulted in no instances of noncompliance. So that's good for that letter. The next letter, this is the 114 letter, and it talks about a couple areas, significant audit findings, and we're pleased to report that we noted no transactions that were entered into by the governmental unit for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance. This also mentions that there were two new Gaspys adopted in the current year, Gaspys 63 and 65. Gaspys 63, you guys were stating, it used to be called the statement of net assets, and now it's statement of net position, so that changed. And then 65, if you go back in your fund statement, there's categories deferred inflows and outflows, so they re-categorize some of the assets and liability amounts. And then accounting estimates on the second page. These estimates are consistent with last year, and they're estimates over the allowance for doubtful accounts on the tax and stormwater utility revenues. Also, you have an estimate on depreciation, and then accumulated vacation leave. We're pleased to report there were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. All corrected and uncorrected statements were made by management. There were no disagreements with management. Management's also provided us with a representation letter. Management also hasn't consulted with any other independent accountant regarding any issue, and there were no other audit findings or issues to report. And with respect to the supplementary information, that is consistent from the previous year, and we were able to perform our procedures there. Also, you know, your report date is October 11. And I was just mentioning to the finance director, we have plenty of clients that are on extension, and you guys were timely filed, so that is nice to report, nice to have clients that timely report. So that concludes our presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
First, I just want to check with my colleagues. Did everybody get a copy of this letter? That's the last one that he was talking about dated October 11, because I didn't.
I didn't either, I don't think.
Councilmember Seaman said it was tucked in the back of the book.
Inside the back cover.
Councilmembers, this was the letter that I had emailed out late this afternoon. So for those whose books were in the box, it was tucked in the back. And for those who didn't have, and that would be Councilmember Daniels Cohen and Mayor Williams, I think the two of you did get the letter.
Dispute solved.
Okay, that's why.
That's why I would control this.
That's why.
I just have a general question about Gaspys. It seems like from a lay perspective, some of the changes are just changing names, and therefore it makes it difficult to understand what went before and what's coming now. Can you just say anything about the substantive reason for the Gaspys changes? Because it's like, okay, you know, so you're rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic. You're calling things different names. What's the reason?
I always have to defend the Gaspys, okay? Actually, the changes came about specifically with 65, as you guys don't have any derivatives. But some of the folks that have derivatives, some of the true accountants looking at the balance sheet, you know, looked at the difference in the fair value in a hedge, and they said, hey, that's not really an asset or a liability. So as a result of that, they felt as though it was fairly misleading to put that on a balance sheet. So if you were to look in 65 and other entities that have fair value of hedges, you'll see that's in a deferred inflow or an outflow of the resource. Because I think the terms that they use is, you know, if you're not consuming assets or increasing your net position or decreasing your net position, then, you know, it has to either be an asset. If it's not an asset, then it has to be expense. If it's not expense, then it could fall in this category. So it's fairly technical, but the bond rating agencies, you know, they understand it. It does provide a little bit of guidance for those people that, looking at a balance sheet and trying to understand fair value and what is it. And everyone knows a lot of these things are in the future, so.
Because we knew that a number of Gaspys changes were to bring things that were in the footnotes and bring them up above the bottom line.
Right.
And that's all fully implemented now?
Yeah, yeah, 63 and 65, yeah.
And are there any similar potential items coming up in the future?
Yeah, in your financial statements, there's a list of all the Gaspys that are upcoming. I don't know if the finance director wants to talk about any of those. I believe you're.
I'm just thinking about any of them of significance to local government like us.
Yeah, there's a Gaspys on retirement that is going to have an impact. Your retirement plan doesn't have a separate audit. It's just included in your financial statements. But that's going to have a significant impact. And I believe you're going to have a presentation by your actuary, and I know he's spoken to many.
And that's why we've kind of combined these.
Right.
Any other general questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Seaman?
I don't really have any general questions, but I just don't want to wait for any more to say that what a pleasure it is, again, Ms. Brooks, we thank you for the prompt filing and the good accounting that we do. I was commenting to the mayor before the meeting started how what a pleasure it is after several years of difficulties that. after several years of difficulties, that these things go so smoothly, and so I didn't anticipate any problems. And from what I've read here, I certainly don't see any problems this year, so I thank you, Ms. Brooks.
And just to emphasize that again, I mean, it is not easy getting a statement done, prepared, all the entries made, everything prepared. You know, you don't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, you're timely filed, and we have a lot of clients that aren't in that situation, so.
And.
That's good news. It still takes a long time.
It's remarkable and really appreciated, thank you.
Yeah, and all the new GASPAs that come out, I mean, it's 24/7.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, why am I not surprised that this was not only timely filed, but in such excellent order? So I really appreciate what you all do and what Yolanda does. That's the wrong name, isn't it?
Yvonne.
I'm losing my mind, baby. Yvonda does, in her capacity.
Ms. Brooks.
Ms. Brooks, I'm sorry, Ms. Brooks. I couldn't get to the second name. Does, in her capacity here with the city. She's just so excellent, always excellent, always timely, and it's not just excellent, it's perfect, so, there you go, thank you.
And always putting the screws to whatever process might have the least little bit of squishiness to it. Every time I turn around, there's some new requirement about what somebody has to do, and Ms. Brooks always has good reason for it. Councilmember Grimes.
At the risk of embarrassing you, I will extend my thanks also and extend them to acting, sorry, former acting city manager Suzanne Ledlow, who was in charge of the whole shop at the period when, the majority of the period that this report covers, so thank you also.
Me too, thank you also.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you. So I just wanted to comment, we received this only on Friday, and I'm assuming you would expect due diligence might take a little bit longer than the time between then and now.
Yeah, we apologize for getting you that on Friday. We'll make sure next year we send it out early. But just so you know, to summarize it, I know you don't have the comments, your accounting policies were consistent from the previous year, you adopted the two new GASPAs, and you didn't have any other issues. But we should have gotten it to you early, so.
And just another question, and this may concern the additional accounting rules coming out, and maybe we'll get to this in the next presentation, but when pension liabilities are going to be reported differently next year, is that right, or is it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's 2015.
Okay.
Yeah, you have ways, yeah.
So two more audits from now.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for our auditors? And as I asked that question, I wanted to give you the opportunity to say what I'm thinking you want to say, which is reminding us that we can contact you anytime, and we have your contact information.
Absolutely. Yeah, if you have any questions at all, you know, with respect to the audit or deliverables tonight or the ones you've just received, feel free to contact us directly. I mean, we work for you, we're hired by you, so feel free to do that.
And we will schedule in January, coming back and looking at some of the financial information contained in this report and also the quarterly reports that the city manager is providing, and that we have a little discussion of the next one for the first quarter of this year later on the agenda. And I think all of that ties into some good conversation that we can have as the budget begins to be put together for next fiscal year. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
And we'll move to our next agenda item, which is a presentation on the police employee's retirement plan actuarial valuation. Welcome.
Thank you. Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. My name's Tom Lohman. I'm the actuary for the police pension fund. I was here last year as well, so this is my second presentation in front of you, giving this sort of an annual review. So I'm following the same format I did last year, I've changed the numbers, we're now a year later, and I've added a few new slides, I've taken out a few. So what I want to cover today is a little bit of background about the plan. I don't want to assume you always remember how the plan got started, where it sort of came from. Go over this year's valuation results, July 1, 13 valuation, which sets the budget for fiscal year of 15, okay? And that's what's really new. I will spend some time talking about GASP. I talked about it last year, but we're that much closer now. And the closer we get, the more people ask questions about GASP and how it's going to work and what's different. And then I have a slide at the end I gave to the Maryland GFOA on changes in the pension world. And I won't cover all those issues, but again, if any ones look interesting to you, let me know when I get there, and we'll talk about those. As far as background, your police officers here originally were in the state retirement plan, which is where your other employees currently get their pensions from. But it was decided that as public safety employees, you really need to have a different retirement age, different retirement benefit package, to be competitive with other police plans around the state, like Montgomery County. So in 2001, a decision was made to set up your own plan, pull them out of state plan, set up your own local plan for police officers. At the time, it required a large increase in the unfunded liability, because you've got very little money from the state, and you had a plan which all of a sudden was your plan all by itself, which is about 20% funded. You could have joined the state's LEOPS option, local law enforcement option that the state offered, but their benefits were even more generous and were a bit more expensive, so you decided to sort of create your own plan. So that's where this plan came from. The benefits by public safety standards are relatively modest, but still a good plan. After 25 years, a police officer can retire on 50% of salary. They can retire early, but they get a reduced benefit. And after they retire, they get COLIS, cost of living adjustments. They're capped at 3% per year, but basically tied to the CPI. There are also disability benefits. So if you're hurt in the line of duty in particular, you get a fairly generous disability benefit, it might be 50% of pay or 2/3, depending upon the level of severity. And this is important, because in the early years of the plan, there were quite a few disabilities. There have been fewer now than there were back then. But one reason it's been difficult to get the plan well-funded is the large number of disabilities that occurred in the early years. And while we'll see later the employer contribution is significant as a percent of payroll, the employees also contribute 7% of pay to the plan. So that describes the benefits the plan offers. So every year we do evaluation. The purpose of the evaluation is sort of to reset the funding requirements of the plan, that this is a defined benefit plan, the benefits are defined, the costs are not. So the market goes up investment-wise, the costs often comes down. If pay increases are higher than we thought, the cost goes up. And we generally look at things as a percent of payroll. The benefits are tied to payroll, the contributions we think of as a percent of payroll. Between last year's valuation, 2012, this year's valuation, 2013, the city contribution increased a bit, from just under 40% of payroll to 41.3% of payroll, fairly significant number as a percent of payroll. Pensions are expensive, this plan is also expensive. The main reason it did increase from year to year was the ages, some of the employees increased, and the older the employee age, the higher the cost is as a percent of payroll. So on the next slide, too many numbers. I know there's too many numbers on a piece of paper, but I thought I'd show you sort of the key page of the evaluation report. And at the top of the page, I show you last year's column, 2012, this year's column, 2013. And the first thing I point out, along the lines of one of your citizens talking about before, was the investment return assumption, or we call it the discount rate of 7.5%. This was 8% until last year, and then this is the second year where it's 7.5. We did lower it 0.5%. That did not come without some pain. When you lower the assumption, the contribution goes up. It means you can depend less on investment return and more on principal payments, contributions coming into the plan. We may one day want to lower it again. If that happens, then again, your contribution will go up further, your liability measures will go up. As far as the returns in the funds since the crash in 2008, 2009, they've been very good, like most plans. As a matter of fact, your returns have been better than most of our pension plans we've seen in this area.
Well, so for instance, 8%, 7.5%, what has the return been for the last year?
I believe it was around, was it 14%, 13%? It was a good year last year.
So was the decrease from 8% to 7.5%, what motivated that? Is it just your projection of economic conditions going forward?
Right, I'm going to touch on it on a slide a little bit later, a couple of concerns, but first I'll answer in terms of a survey, which is not a full answer, okay? But we do survey what other plans are doing, and 8 was by far the most common interest rate. I don't have a slide here, I can send it to the city later, showing how the rates of assumptions have come down. And right now, 7.5% is probably a little below average as a rate for public sector plans, 8 would be above average, somewhere in between is where most plans are. The reason we lowered it in part was you're investing in stocks and bonds. The fact is, bond rates aren't what they used to be. And if you're not 100% invested in bonds, but those bonds were paying 5% before, and now you're lucky to get 3, you know, that part of the portfolio is not going to return what it could have 10 years ago. So for that reason alone, it's sort of time to bring the interest rate down. So basically, it's an impression that the long-term rate of return, that likelihood of making 8% is not what it used to be. Desire was to lower it some. A year or so ago, people were saying, gee, over the last 10 years, most plans have averaged 2%. You should have assumed 2%. Well, no, we're not going to do that. Just like, you know, for the last four years, you probably averaged over 10%. Well, that's nice, good recovery period, but long-term, you're not going to average 10%, we don't think. It'd be nice if you did. So we had to set, and something we're setting is 7.5%. But we do look at it again, and we may want to lower it again. We're not going to be using 5% or 6% anytime soon, though. We're still taking risks. It's still an assumption tied to what we think we can earn on the fund. If you want to adopt a risk-free rate, which is what some people are arguing, costs will go through the roof, but you can de-risk some. So again, we can spend a lot of time talking about the return on asset assumption, but at least know that your assumption is about the middle of the pack and actually a little bit below that, and not as high as it was a couple of years ago. A couple of numbers I'll point out here, your payroll is shown here, and this is base pay, doesn't include overtime, it's all its pensionable pay. The actual liability is about $20 million. The assets, about $8.7 million, I think it's probably higher today. So what you take away from those two numbers is the plan is about 40% funded.
So Ms. Breckville, who commented earlier, talked about 80% funding.
That would be wonderful. So if you can write me a check for another.
We're not going to write you that check, but what's your comment on her comment that she believes that 80% funding is prudent and expected?
I want it to be 100% funded, okay? When the plan started, it was 20% funded, we're now up to 40% funded. It will take time to get there, it will not happen overnight.
You probably addressed this last year.
Right. I mean, if you have any extra money laying around, I'd love you to contribute to get the 100% up more. Is this plan less than the average plan funded-wise at 40%? Yes. And that's simply because of the history of the plan, how we got here, and it will take a while to get it up higher. There is no magic behind 80%. People talk about 80% many ways, there is no magic to 80%. Certainly it's better than 40, so you'd rather be at 80 than 40. But the goal really is to be 100% funded, if not more, and actually build a margin. I just think it's going to take us, again, 20 years to get there, unless, again, you want to accelerate the funding, which I think would be a great idea to do. But right now, we're on a 20-year policy to get this paid off, and it will take that long to get to 100% funded.
So I apologize. So when the fund started in '01, it was 20% funded.
Yeah.
It's now close to 40% funded, and we are 13 years later. And so you're saying the expectation is that in another 10 to 15 years, we will be?
I think it might take 20 years to get there, yeah.
Will be up to 60%.
Oh, no, oh, sorry, 100% funded.
100% funded.
Yeah, as far as how long to get to 60, I haven't done those calculations, but.
But we've got a, we sort of have an increasing rate of coverage effectively.
That's right. And again, another reason we're not further along already, I think, is early on in the plan's history, there were quite a few disabilities that occurred, and those disabilities slowed down the funding. It created liabilities that nobody was expecting. But.
And the point I'm wondering about is, I assume that, yes, the funding level should be higher, but the funding levels we're at being low doesn't mean that we won't be able to pay pensions as they start to become due, because not, everybody isn't going to retire tomorrow.
That's correct, that's correct. And again, cash flow-wise, you are, you know, bringing in, between employee contributions and employer contributions, it may not be a million and a half, but a million and four or so per year, you're bringing in enough cash to probably more than cover your benefit payments going out the door. So you're not probably in a negative cash flow situation. But still, we want to get the plan 100% funded. We want to get that unfunded liability from 20 to 40 to 100. And hopefully, we'll start picking up the pace, because like I said, disabilities held us back, the stock market held us back to some extent. Although when you were that poorly funded, again, market returns really weren't the big driver. And it's all about how quickly we can pay it off. So again, if you want to try to accelerate the amortization period, go from 20 years to 15 years, put more money in, that would be wonderful. But everything comes at a cost, of course, in your budget, so you've got to sort of balance things out. And a 20-year amortization schedule is not that unusual for a public pension fund.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. Are we asking questions as we go, or are we going to ask questions at the end? Because I'm happy to jump in.
We're hoping to wait till the end, because he might answer them as he gets there. We've had a little slippage.
Yeah, I'm happy to join in, I just, I know what to do.
Okay, well, I'm going to cover a couple of other issues, then we'll come back probably to this topic. You heard about GASP before, again, the Government Accounting Standards Board, and these are the four things they're trying to accomplish: transparency, accountability, interperiod equity, and decision usefulness. So they're changing the pension accounting rules. Whether they accomplish these goals, I don't know, but they think that they did. So if you've heard two things about GASP, for the new pension accounting rules, these are the things you've heard. First thing is, the unfunded liability is going to go in your balance sheet. So in the case of the police plan, on the prior page, or a couple pages ago, we showed a number of $11.8 million of unfunded liability. That roughly is what goes in your balance sheet, call it $12 million. Right now, it's a footnote, okay? So that's one of the things that will change. The second thing that will change is your accounting expense number will no longer be your funding contribution, meaning that if we ask you to put in a million dollars, you put in a million dollars, the million dollars was your cash, and it was your accounting expense. That's going to change. The cash funding doesn't have to change, it's still the million, million, one, but the accounting expense is going to be a totally different calculation. Basically, the change in the unfunded liability plus your contributions is your expense for the year. So they'll be divorcing the concept of accounting expense from cash funding. So those are major changes, very major changes in pension accounting. The $12 million number I mentioned is the police plan. While I'm not the actuary for your general employees, they're in the state plan, the state will allocate a share of that unfunded liability back to you, and you'll report that on your balance sheet, just like you'll report the police plan unfunded liability on your balance sheet. So that's the short version of GASP, except for effective dates. And there actually are two GASP accounting rules. GASP 67 actually is this fiscal year, fiscal year 14, but that's really accounting rules for the pension plan and pension disclosure. It doesn't affect your balance sheet. The things that you're most interested in will be GASP 68, that is fiscal 15. That's when this unfunded liability will hit your balance sheet, and where most of the real accounting takes place. GASP for your general employees, GASP 67, the plan accounting will be handled at the state level, the state retirement board, they'll take care of that, so that'll be transparent to you. But for 68, for your general employees, they'll send you that information for your fiscal 15 statement for your general employees. And really, my last slide, I mentioned before when I gave a talk to the Maryland GFOA, these are all the topics in sort of the pension environment that we live in today. I talked about, I can spend time on any of them. PEPDO stands for the Public Employee Pension Transparency Act. It's a movement by some in Congress to have you disclose liabilities at a very low interest rate. I mentioned the low interest rate again, that's what's driving down our investment return assumptions. There's a Society of Actuaries, our SOA, Blue Ribbon Panel, looking at problems with public pension plans and how we can sort of resolve some of the problems. I mentioned again, the interest rate again. Not funding the ARC. The woman who spoke before, one of your citizens, mentioned how you were doing a good job funding what the actuaries are asking for, which is true. You are fully funding the ARC, that's not true. Not funding the ARC. The woman who spoke before, one of your citizens, mentioned how you were doing a good job funding what the actuaries are asking for, which is true. You are fully funding the ARC, that's not true everywhere. A lot of places are not fully funding what the actuary says we need to fund for the pension There's some new pension funding guidelines coming out. Funding is not mandatory, there's no federal law that says you have to contribute a certain amount of money, but we're trying to encourage people to fund properly, so several organizations I'm involved with are coming up with new funding guidelines, saying, this is what good funding means, try to fund at these levels. I'm always amazed to find out that about half the public pension funds do not fund the ARC. The ARC is the old accounting term for the annual required contribution, which really wasn't, or actually required, which really wasn't required, but you are, have always been funding that, so that's good. A lot of discussion about benefit designs and others like the Arnold Foundation, and some mayors in California looking at changing rules on pension protections and what rights participants have. So that's my Pension World slide. I always had to have this slide here, small words about the assumptions and methods I use that went into my valuation. That's a requirement. So I'm guessing you might want to go back and talk about this page or this page, but that ends my formal presentation.
Thank you. One thing that I'd like to make sure that we understand, in thinking about the rate of return, that this was eight, now seven.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half. My sense is that it might not be clear to people exactly what that represents, because I think a lot of people, when you see that percentage, you're thinking, I don't get that return on my investments, you know, if I get, you know, point oh one percent in the checking account and point one percent in the savings account, and that's nowhere near seven. And my sense is that this rate of return includes appreciation in some of the assets.
Right, actually, the American Actuaries just published a letter on the topic of discount rates, on that topic, public pension plans. I'll send that to you as well, you can send that around. And basically, there are sort of two different types of purposes for using a discount rate. One purpose might be, if I like, wanted to go out and buy annuities for everybody to an insurance company, what kind of rate might I get to buy annuities for everybody in this plan, to cover all the benefits that I've earned to date, say? And the answer there is, you might get three percent, maybe, and that would be a safe, secure way of doing it. Now, most public pension plans don't do that. They're not out there in the market buying annuities. Instead, they invest in stocks and bonds, maybe it's sixty, forty, stocks versus bonds. Well, however you're invested, the question then becomes, well, what do you think you're going to earn on those monies in the long term? But you're taking risk, clearly taking risk. And the answer is, well, we used to think you could earn eight percent on a nice mix of stocks and bonds. Not risk-free, it is, as you say, it's your dividends, your interest on your bonds, your appreciation, and depreciation, realized and unrealized gains and losses. So most pension funds are run based on a best estimate of what the return is going to be. Best estimate isn't the current terminology, it's an old term, but it's what do we think you're going to earn? And that'll allow you to sort of keep the cost as a level percent of pay, that's the hope. But it is, we're not funding this on a risk-free basis. We are taking some risk. It is a self-insured plan, and so you're making the fine benefit promise, and the question is, how do you want to fund that? If you don't want to take risk, we can put all the money in bonds, we lower the interest rate, and your cost goes up a lot. Is it appropriate to sort of advance capture that investment risk premium? Well, it's what most plans do, you don't have to, and that's simply the way it is. So our discount rate, our expected return on assets, is what we think stocks and bonds will earn, based on your investment mix in your plan. There is, of all the states, there's only one state where their assumption currently is under seven percent, that's a recent event. There's still a few that are over eight percent. Like I said, the average statewide plans is somewhere between seven and a half and eight. That's the average sort of rate of return. And again, I'll send you a distribution, you can look at it, but yes, this is not a risk-free rate of return, just like I can't go out, or you can't, as you said, to get a CD. I get a CD at zero point some odd percent these days. This is not that kind of rate. This is a risky rate tied to what we think we can earn on stocks and bonds.
And right now, because the stock market is performing so well, rate of return is up, but that will change.
That will change.
But that's why the current rate of return is, for us, over ten percent, because part of the investment is in stocks.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Councilmember mail.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the audit document in page, page two, page, yeah, it's page two, says that favorable returns during thirteen offset losses from 2012?
That's true.
So in 2012, what was our, what was our investment return then? Negative five, negative ten, ballpark?
I don't have those numbers here. All that I know is that, as a general, most of my plans did well in thirteen, you did better than most in twelve. Probably wasn't a bad year, but I'm sure you didn't make the assumption you weren't negative. And then my guess is, ten and eleven were both very good years also. And so you've had, the last four years, you've had three very good years, one year you were somewhat below the assumption. The real bad year, you go back to 2008, 2009. Obviously, the only good news is that your funded level was so low that you were actually better off in the plans that were well-funded.
So 2008, nine were loss years, 2012 was a loss year?
No, it wasn't a loss, they just didn't, you just didn't meet the seven and a half percent target.
Okay, so on page four, when it gives investment gain, events, investment parentheses, gain slash loss, that is not a loss, it's a loss relative to the projection?
I, I'm sorry, I don't have the document. Yes, this is the, the gain-loss relative to the assumption, that's correct.
So we made less than, was our assumption eight percent last year, or is it seven? So it's still seven. So we made some number, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, less than what we had projected to make?
That is correct. I believe it actually was probably done off an eight percent return that year, because it was the year where we changed the assumption, so fiscal twelve would have assumed eight. So you were probably expecting to get somewhere-- If I had to guess off the top of my head, I'd say you probably earned about two percent that year, maybe three.
Okay, thank you. So the table near the end of this document, we had, in 2001, we had unfunded liabilities of about four million dollars.
Yes.
And we funded twenty percent of our liabilities.
Right.
And this year, we have a liability of eleven million dollars. We're up forty percent, but our, in other words, our unfunded amount is growing.
Right.
So compared to, for example, our tax base, that number's gotten, you know, way bigger from four million to eleven million.
Right.
Our tax base is what, twenty, twenty-five, something like that?
What page are you looking at right now?
Page fourteen?
Fourteen.
Yeah. So I guess, and I'm just crudely, not using any methods, but trying to draw a straight line. You know, and the city manager talked about this before, if we went on another ten years, you know, that might take us to sixty percent funded, but then, you know, you'd add another, you know, eight, nine million dollars. You know, if, that assumes it's sort of linear, so the liability, the amount that we have unfunded continues to grow and grow and grow. And I guess, I guess I'd just love to see those projections, because unless at some point it stabilizes, we may, the percent keeps getting higher, but the distance we have to climb keeps getting scarier in relation to our tax base.
Yeah. Yeah, you want the dollars to go down, not just the percent to go up, I got that. Matter of fact, if you look at the last column there, it's the unfunded liability as a percent of payroll, it sort of makes your point about, compared to the tax basis. So we were unfunded liability back in 2001, two hundred and forty-one percent of payroll, and this is, again, base pay, and now we're at four hundred and fourteen, although that number did go down a little bit from last year to this year. So as a percent of payroll, it went down. One of the things we talked to the pension committee about, one of the concerns that we have is that we have this twenty-year amortization schedule, but we restart it every year, so we don't really get any closer. So we've had a discussion about, let's close the amortization period, so that we go from twenty to nineteen to eighteen to seventeen to sixteen. That's one of the things that's caused the funded ratio to go up, with the unfunded liability in dollars not to go down. So we want the funded ratio to go up and get to a hundred percent, which obviously implies a zero unfunded liability, but we want the dollar amount of the unfunded liability to go down.
Right.
And we're in a market where the assets should now be helping us. I don't see, hopefully, big pay raises, but I shouldn't say that too loudly, the police officers may want big pay raises, but that does affect pension liabilities as well. But I feel your concern, though.
And I guess the sort of, to me, the thing that would give me, whether it's eighty or sixty percent or a hundred percent, it would just give me better peace of mind, is if we could get some sort of projection that would show when the unfunded liability, sort of, the dollar number finally stabilizes.
Right.
So when we get to that point, and the liability is not growing anymore, then that seems like sort of a sigh of relief, and then, you know, how do we get it to be smaller is the next challenge. But just knowing how far away that inflection point is, where the dollar balance is not continuing to get bigger and bigger, would be of great interest to me.
Okay. We can send some projections. I can tell you, the rule of thumb is that when you get to under seventeen years left on your amortization schedule, you start paying all the interest and some of the principal off, technically answered. So we close the amortization period, in theory, within three years, that would happen. But then other things intervene, they always do.
Yeah.
You know, if the market's good, it goes down faster than you thought, market's poor, it starts going in the wrong direction again. But we'll send you, we'll send you a projection based on what I'll call no future gains and losses, things just go according to schedule.
Okay. And then my last comment is in relation to this change in the accounting of how the liabilities are calculated, and that in association with our, you know, this is a new fund, so we have a low funded percentage, and sort of, we sort of get credit for that, because it's a new fund. But I just wonder if those two things start interacting at any point, if having a low funded ratio and the new, the way the new accounting procedures might affect our, the previous audit that we just heard about, you know, the way that that sort of balance sheet is calculated. Do we have anything to worry about there when we get to 2015? City manager is nodding his head.
Sorry, bonus. Not nodding my head to say that it's, that there may be a structural issue. I mean, it sounds like this GASBIE 68 requirement is going to hit everybody in the state of Maryland, and so--
Yes.
Everybody's unfunded liabilities are going to be showing up on their balance sheet, where right now, they are not.
I just want to make sure that ours aren't showing up in a worse way, because our percentage funded is lower.
I can say a few things about it. I mean, and I'll rephrase the question if that's okay.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. The question is, would a bond rating agency treat you any differently because it's no accounting standard occurring or not occurring? And that's the way the question is usually asked of me, and I say, to which I say, I don't know, and then I would follow up with things like, the Moody's has said that they looked at all the state governments, because that's fifty to look at and not thousands. And they said they don't believe any of the state governments will be adversely affected in their credit rating because of the change. They did say that some local governments would be adversely affected. On the other hand, the information, while it's moved out of a footnote onto your balance sheet, they know what it was. It's not that they didn't know what it was. So in theory, it shouldn't change anything. On the other hand, if you look at whatever you're, if you are interested in your bond ratings, and you're borrowing money on the markets, if you are, they're going to look at you relative to others with a similar credit rating. So if you are AAA, and they look at a plan that's forty percent funded, it won't look that good. It'll be a ding, but hopefully they'll recognize that already. I think our goal for all of us, though, is to get the planned funded ratio up to a hundred percent, to help with the solvency concerns that members might have, to help with the credit rating concerns the credit rating agencies might have, and I think we'd like to go there faster, not slower, if at all possible.
Thank you. And just my last comment for city manager and staff is, we've had questions in the past about, are our stock holdings in companies that would be on the nuclear weapons company list, and comments about divesting from fossil fuel companies that are relevant to this discussion. So I just bring those up without necessarily expecting any resolution, but it would be helpful to have information on the holdings at some point. Thank you.
If I might, we do have that information, we've shared it with the folks who have raised that. I'm not sure that I shared it with council, but I'm happy to share that, and we don't really have any holdings in those types of firms.
Just to get a, excuse me, I'm right here. Just to get a sense of proportion of between being at a forty or forty-one, forty-one percent funding as opposed to a hundred percent funding. How much money should we ask Bill Gates for in order for us to get to a hundred percent funding?
Twelve million dollars, I'd be happy with twelve million dollars. If you have your general employees as well in mind, there's a separate number from that, but one problem there is you're in a pool with about a hundred other employers, and you really can't put the extra money in unless they put the extra money in too.
Right.
Otherwise, they'll scarf it up for you.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah.
Is this, the police department is a very small entity, with just very few people paying into it on an annual basis, because it only has so many employees. Does that affect your prognostications? In other words, if we had a police department that was three times the number of people paying in, would that mean that we would be able to increase our valuation or, you know, more quickly than by virtue of having a smaller pool of, or is it cut both ways? Because we have a smaller pool of contributors, our risk is also reduced, because you can only have so many people wanting to retire at one time.
I don't think it changes the funding discussion, the funded ratios. It certainly affects the risk discussion. For example, there was an amendment recently to the plan to eliminate one of the optional forms of payments that I've been asking for, actually for some time, because it came with a big risk, that if someone died shortly, the retiree, they might get a large lump sum payment. It happened once, to one of the former retirees. And it's not that the expected cost was something we couldn't calculate, it's just that the risk was high, but if it didn't happen, it would be a problem. Just like if you had, you know, a big event and a large number of disabilities in the police force, all at the same time, that would be a problem. That's a risk event. But in terms of the expected values, being three times the size, it just makes all the numbers generally three times as much.
Is there, I, this, my question stems from the fact that, like in, you're thinking that in twenty years, we could get to a hundred percent, but in the last year, we went from thirty-nine point seven to forty-one point three percent, even with a growing stock market. And at that rate, it's going to take longer than twenty years if we inch up that slowly. Is, so that leads me to question, is there sort of a tipping point in terms, once you get up to a certain level of valuation, you start, like you, like it is when you're amortizing a mortgage, you start paying down the principal. In this case, it's kind of an annuity, where you start building up faster towards the hundred percent by simply virtue of this, of the gradual working through the amortization schedule. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Yes. I don't know that there's an automatic tipping point to define the acceleration, the funded percentage. There is this tipping point, I mentioned before, around seventeen years, when your payment, amortization payment actually covers the interest and some of the principal. Right now, we're not, we're just covering most of the interest and none of the principal. That's the nature of this particular amortization schedule. But again, I can go ahead and run off the projections, and the projections will show you what's going to occur. As I mentioned before, though, something else will always intervene, for the good or for the bad.
Right.
But I'll give you the schedule, then you can sort of decide if you think there is a tipping point in that projection or not.
Well, yeah, because it would be interesting to me to know that if we could get, sort of accelerate the amortization by a lump sum payment from our--
Sure.
From our budget, then that might get us in a stronger position, so that we actually are paying down principal and narrowing the actual dollars, as well as the percentages that are the unfunded liabilities.
So what you're asking for is if we made a special one-time payment--
Yes.
And didn't shrink the annual payment? Because obviously, if you shrink the annual payment, it doesn't get you anywhere any quicker hardly.
That's correct.
Right, okay. That would be, that would be great.
Thank you.
Except for the person that's got to balance the budget, but--
Yeah, I was just commenting to--
I was just commenting to Councilmember Siemens, yeah, we want to increase the payments into the pension system. We want to do other things in the operating budget.
Right.
And we want to reduce taxes on our residents. All at cross purposes, don't we?
And I'd like to lower the interest rate a little more, maybe, one day, but.
There's nothing left to lower it to.
Well, that's, that raises another question I had that I forgot.
No, you're out of time.
No, no. And that is, is that we've been dealing in a very low interest rate environment for six years now. For people who are retired, fixed incomes, you know, they don't see their savings grow at all, hardly.
Right.
In fact, it loses ground to inflation. Would, and this is sort of a hypothetical question, inflation actually benefit our pension in the sense that the interest rates, if interest rates were able to be, to go up some, would we be in a, would be in a better position if that were to happen?
Yes. I mean, it would help in a lot of ways. It'd probably raise your tax assessments on your real estate. It would, the benefits, the retirees are indexed to inflation, but they're capped at 3%.
Right.
So some of that wouldn't be captured. You might have to take your pay raises to the retire, to the employees, to increase their pensions.
Well, no, it cuts them many ways.
Yes, but as a, as a general rule, I've been rooting for more inflation to help these pension plans out, because the longer it stays where it is, the more anxious I am about how low to make that assumption. Again, we did the first big jump, 7.5%. And we're still probably a little bit, not for plans your size so much, but a little bit below average, but that everyone's changing every year. And I fear that one day, I'll have another quarter percent or half percent drop in that rate, which puts pressure on other parts of your budget. So there is always this balancing act to do. You want to anticipate a high rate, but on the other hand, it's got to be a reasonable rate. And how long that stays reasonable depends on what happens. So I am rooting for inflation to some extent, but I know there's offsets.
Yes, there are. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. This is, this is a question more for city staff, as loved it probably. This just occurs to me, and I'm not sure I'm going to phrase it quite right, but what's the situation with the county reimbursement for police services when it comes to pensions and any extra payments we might make, the actuarial payments we might make? Are they reimbursing us for pension costs?
No.
Should they be, in our opinion, as opposed to theirs?
I, I would take certainly any kind of employee-related costs towards the, towards duplication payments. The county's police benefits are very different than ours, so we'd have to, that would have to be taken into effect. And we don't offer health, health insurance for retirees. But we should get as much money towards the cost of these programs as it costs.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think I need to discuss this any further right now, but it's, maybe it's an interesting point to explore further.
It certainly is.
I'm sure we've explored it before, but.
We have explored it before. We are hoping to get to, a chance to get back to a working group where we can talk the formulas.
Okay. Thank you.
Which reminds me that there should be a letter from the Montgomery chapter to the county council asking for that to move forward. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. The stocks and bonds that we invest in, are these all blue chip firms, federal bonds?
You're asking the actual, not the investment manager, so I really don't know the answer to the question.
I think it's a mix of some high growth, some moderate growth, large and small. So it's, it's similar to a 401K. It's, you know, or a mutual fund. It's some blue chips and some smaller growth companies also, so that we can generate a little bit of yield in case the market suggests that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think that takes care of our questions, and thank you for coming and attempting to explain pensions and actuarial statistics.
You probably explained fine, and it's still up to us to attempt to understand.
Do we want to talk a little bit about the upcoming?
We do. There are two other, we'll be coming back to the council in January or February of this upcoming year. We, there was main mention earlier in the presentation about a change that was made to one of the benefit options that can be exercised. There was, had specifically to do with a payout in case of death of a, of a member and whether that payout occurs at, and I apologize for stealing all of Alexis's thunder, whether that payout occurs at one time or whether it's able to be effectively phased in. As was stated earlier, it creates a potential area of risk for the fund because you could have a few folks exercising that option, which immediately causes a pretty large payout from our fund as opposed to over time. And so recently, there was a vote, and I will now turn it over to our HR director to talk about that.
Good evening, everybody. As Brian was saying, we are looking at making some changes to the pension fund for the police officers. The first one, yes, there was a vote by the actual police officers to accept changing one of the retirement options. And this particular option, as Brian was saying, and Tom alluded to, with this option, if a retiree were to select it and then die, they would have a lump sum payment go out to their beneficiary. This could be upwards of $400,000, $500,000. And in a plan our size, we really cannot afford to have that happen. And this did occur when we had an employee who retired and then passed away shortly thereafter his retirement. There was a lump sum payment made of almost $400,000, which was roughly about 10% of the plan at that time. That is a huge hit. So what we're proposing to do, and we will bring that to the council shortly, is to replace this option with another option that would still allow the retirees' beneficiaries to forget, or to get the actual benefits that they would have, but have it over a longer period of time, so there isn't that large hit to the plan. What we're looking at is what's called a pop-up option. And this, this option is actually going to do a couple of things for the police officers. The first one, they'll still get their normal retirement benefit while they're living. But if they should pass away before they've gotten all of their benefits, then their beneficiary would get either 50% or 100% of the benefit, depending on how the retiree actually selected it. And they would get that throughout their lifetime. Also, if the beneficiary dies, or if the beneficiary and the retiree become divorced, it voids out that retirement election where the beneficiary would get the actual benefits. They would no longer get the benefits, and the retiree would get what would normally be just a regular life-only option. And it tends to give them a little bit more money during the lifetime of their receiving of the benefits. So that's what we're looking at there. I see a lot of question marks. Questions about that particular issue?
Yeah. I've just been, I mean, we're just trying to give you a preview now. We will be coming back with an actual discussion of, of the issue. But if there's any other questions people just want to mention now that we can be mindful of, we'll, we can take those.
I just want to make sure we understand the status of this. The employees have approved this potential change, and it still has to go to the pension board?
It still has to go to the board.
Okay.
So then it'll be presented to council hopefully in January.
Councilmember Mayo.
I guess I'm just curious of the relative cost of the proposal to the city, the long-term cost, the projected cost. So if the current option creates disruption, because it potentially creates a $400,000 or $500,000 hole at once, but it's 5% or 10% or 20% or 50% cheaper, that's a really important data point for us to have versus some, versus the new benefit scheme that you just described, whether that has a greater cost or projected cost for the city.
I think Tom could probably be the best one to speak to.
Probably it's a discounted value that is important to talk about.
The options you pick, whether it be this, this old option, which was called a full cash refund option, or the new option, which is called a pop-up option, there is an actual reduction that takes place, so the person's benefit has to be reduced to take these options. The problem is one of what I call anti-selection. But I can't go out and say, let me see what kind of health status you are, and then I'll tell you how much I'm going to charge for this option. And with most options, there's relatively little anti-selection that takes place. If you want to provide a benefit for you or you and your spouse for your lifetime, you can do some anti-selection. But the option we had put in the plan originally, which is mirrored to the state, which I wish I hadn't gone in there, is basically says, if you're in really bad health, take this full cash refund option, because if you die tomorrow, that whole reserve, the half million dollars we set aside for you will get paid out to your beneficiary. Well, that's nice, except this wasn't meant to be a life insurance plan. This is meant to be a pension plan, cover pension for someone's lifetime. So if you were going to die shortly after you retire, you don't really need to have this money. Now, if you're married, fine, take a survivor option with a survivor annuity for the rest of your life. But even that won't be worth as much as your whole retirement reserve. So there was a big anti-selection risk for those who were in very bad health, that if they knew anything, they knew enough to pick this option. There was one person, I think he was even disabled, and obviously was in bad health, I assume, and he knew enough to pick this option. While there was a reduction, the reduction didn't factor in his health status. The ability to anti-select on these other options, like the pop-up, is greatly diminished because there are lifetime payouts and different sort of trade-offs to occur. So I'm really trying to get rid of something that has a very bad anti-selection impact potentially, which for a big plan like the state of Maryland where you came from, it wasn't a big deal, a big pool, but for yours, it was a big.
Just let me show, by anti-selection, I think is the term you used, you mean something that encourages a behavior that is costly to the city, or?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
It'd be like, you know, you don't want to sell life insurance to people who are terminally ill. You can't spread that cost out. Well, in this case, that's sort of what you did. You sort of sold a life insurance policy to someone who was, who was very sick, because you promised to give him all that money you set aside for his pension benefits. Well, it was meant for a pension. It wasn't meant, you know, to be, to be paid if you lived or if you died. So it was just an anti-selection issue we're trying to get around. And again, it happened once, may not happen again for another 10 years. But before it becomes an issue, we'd like to remove it from the plan, and the member said, "Well, we understand your anti-selection issue, but we want something else." So they picked the pop-up option. So that's, that's what they like to do to trade it off.
Just to follow up there, would this change, change any of the actuarial estimates that you make for future plan projected expenses?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
One more change we wanted to just chat about.
Right. With the recent and ongoing legislation surrounding the same-sex marriages and things like that, we're also looking at what the plan should do with regard to domestic partnership. That's on hold right now as we wait and see what happens with legislation. And our attorneys are working with us on that. So that'll be something else that we'll bring in the upcoming months.
And the short version of that is also that our plan right now is fairly accommodating, I think, as it relates to same-sex and domestic partnerships. And we just want to make sure that we retain that flexibility now that all the federal laws have sort of caught up to Tacoma Park a little bit.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. I think that does it for that item. So we'll move to our regular meeting agenda, and I'll point out that one of the reasons that we moved, starting with this agenda, moved the ability to comment on the voting items is because sometimes they occur late in the evening. And in this case, it would have been later than now, later than 10:15, for anybody, any member of the public who wanted to comment on any of these voting items. So the item before us is a resolution supporting MC 1814, the continuation of the off-sale privilege for Class B beer and light wine. And this is essentially to remove the sunset.
That's correct. When the legislation was put into effect, we were concerned about what might happen, would there be some negative effects of allowing off-sale beer and wine from a restaurant that has a Class B license? The, we've not had any experience with it in the two years, so I can't say one way or the other. We are at a decision point in that we can either not make any change, in which case the option of having off-sale from a Class B restaurant would go away, because the sunset provision would simply kill that legislation. If we want to continue to allow restaurants to be able to not only sell beer and wine to consume on-site, but to purchase and take out, then we need to remove the sunset provision. And so I have written a draft resolution that would remove the sunset provision, but I am throwing it out to you as to what you would like to do. There is a, just as a placeholder, this bill has been submitted to the Montgomery delegation. There will be a hearing on it on December 2nd. And so we do need a decision about what we want to do, either to support the bill, or to pull the bill, or to make an amendment to the bill. And I'm open to your comments and direction.
First, let me see if somebody wants to move the resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded at their discussion, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. As you'll probably recall, when this came before us, before, I was against extending this privilege. But recognizing that I may still be in the minority on that, I do feel that our, our resolution asking for the, the sunset was, was reasonable, given the uncertainty of what the impact's going to be on the city. And I would like to suggest that there is a third alternative, which is to extend the sunset.
That's right. That is, that is a possibility.
Because, again, I feel strongly that it could have detrimental effect, not necessarily in the individual neighborhood, but in, if it's, if this is passed, it would be an effect across the entire city. And we may find that, that we have opened Pandora's box. So I would ask that we, again, extend this so that if and when someone does, you know, accept this privilege, that, that we can then measure it and be able to close the door if we feel that has had a detrimental effect on our city.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Has city staff reached out to the owners of these restaurants and found out why they haven't applied for this additional license?
I haven't. I think the mayor has spoken with Roscoe's and others.
I spoke to a number of businesses, and like out of four or five, only one was even aware of the possibility, but.
Yeah, so I have not, I have not.
And the sense was that they would have to give up valuable space to stock that, and therefore not have the table space to serve.
Roscoe said that?
I recall that being a concern of theirs.
Okay.
So I've not spent time contacting them.
That was a while ago.
Thank you. If I may, I think Laura Barclay from OTBA said, after I raised the question whether this had been brought to the business owners and, the restaurant owners in Old Tacoma, she said that she would talk to them, but I haven't asked her what reaction she got.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Does this have any effect on the fact that the co-op, which is asking for off-sale, like, I get, what is a light wine?
It's not a super powerful wine.
It's not a super powerful wine. I just, I, it says light wine, and I'm like, what in the world is that? It's all 12% or more by, by volume. Will it have any effect on their request for, for a license, I guess?
No.
No. It's a whole different schtick, right?
The Class B is for, is for a restaurant that serves food as well as beverages.
Okay.
So as a sit-in type restaurant.
So if somebody opens a restaurant like The Republic, and they don't have the Class B yet. B yet, they can't, and they don't get it by, what, July 2014?
This, this. Just for off-sale?
Right.
So this isn't, this wouldn't affect Republic's ability to get licensed to?
To serve on-site.
To provide beer and wine on-site.
On-site, on-top, right.
For people who want to carry out.
Yeah.
This on- and off-sale law lasts through June 30th.
Yeah.
Before, with sunset, June 30th of 2014. So there's several, there's several months that even if it sunsetted, that somebody could get both on and off-sale.
And I'm figuring some of my colleagues have got the minus to it, you know, fearful that somebody might open a restaurant where people could be pretty raucous. I just, I don't think it would be a problem. I mean, there's.
This particular provision, the Class B on-sale, where you can go in and drink in the inside, that exists. That wouldn't expire.
Okay.
The only part of this that would expire is the option to also purchase beer and wine to carry off and take home or whatever.
In a baggie.
That's right.
If you pay five cents.
Say again?
If you pay five cents.
No, a paper bag, you don't pay for it. It's just a plastic.
Yes, you do. You pay five cents for the paper bag.
You do?
Yes.
I just, I hear what my colleague Siemens says, but I don't, I don't, I just don't see an issue. And I'm a non-drinker, so it has no effect on me at all. But I just, I know in Montgomery County, in order to get any of these kinds of things passed, you have to give up your firstborn for any kind of a liquor license, a liquor license of any kind. So I'd hate to backstep. Well, maybe you don't have to give your firstborn?
Actually, Montgomery County is very straightforward. It's a fairly reasonable fee, and you go.
You can buy one, buy a license?
That's right.
Really? Okay.
If you meet the, if you meet the standards.
Okay.
Councilmember Schultz.
Sort of a technical question. If a restaurant were to come in tomorrow to the Liquor Board and apply for a Class B off-sale license, and the sunset was remained as it is now, terminating June 30th, what would happen to their license?
It would be grandfathered, and they could keep it over time.
It would be grandfathered in.
That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. My sentiment on this is that it was a good idea to do it two, or a year and a half ago. Nothing's changed, alter my thinking on that. I think it's, part of my thinking is that we're, the city of Tacoma Park is surrounded on all sides by places where people can buy off-sale liquor, beer, wine. And you don't have to go very far. Even if you were right in the middle of Tacoma Park, you're practically within walking distance or a five, three-minute drive. So I don't see this, this Class B off-sale as posing any kind of a threat to our way of life and peace and serenity of our community. Believe me, if I, being in Ward 6 along New Hampshire Avenue and close to a lot of those clubs that are over on the other side of the county line, I'm ever so sensitive to that possibility.
Councilmember Mail.
I support us seeking state legislation that extends this permitting option without Could someone explain to me, what are the limits on just an independent liquor store operating in Tacoma Park? Are they the same as the county or different?
An independent liquor store cannot open in Tacoma Park. There is not a license that's allowable for that. We have one that was grandfathered in when it was in Prince George's County on New Hampshire Avenue. The, so there's just not, that, the only things that are open for sale are on sale with this exception of a carryout.
Okay. Sorry, I lost my chance thought.
Too much to drink.
Yeah, that's right. That's the problem. Yeah, but only from Prince George's County. I mean, that's, you know, I guess. To our, to the point of our, that Councilmember Schultz just made, there are businesses selling liquor stores around every corner of our city. We heard earlier tonight about another one moving, literally kitty-corner to the city border in Old Town. So, you know, we make a choice to do that based on social policy from the 1800s or 1900s.
1890s.
1890s. But we do it at an expense to our tax base and our businesses, the business viabilities that we have. And to the extent that alcohol might be perceived as attracting crime, we're still attracting it, just to neighborhoods like some of my own that border the edge of the city. So I just personally don't see that much benefit to this policy, but I recognize the issue we're talking about is a more specific one. If we don't seek, if we choose not to seek this legislation, or perhaps even if we do, given that it's uncertain to move forward, I would support the city communicating to our existing restaurants, who could apply right now for this permit class, a notification that they can apply right now, that if they apply and they're granted permission, that that permit would endure beyond the sunset. But if they don't apply now, and it sunsets, and the law hasn't changed, they lose that option. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
I have not hearing a huge amount of support for liberalizing what we do, asking the state legislature to liberalize what we do by allowing outlets such as the Co-op to sell beer and wine. I'll ask nonetheless, if we pass this resolution, terminating, asking the state legislature to terminate the sunset, to let this go on indefinitely, and then we come back, because we are not going to change what we ask for right now. If we come back, it was public hearing and all that kind of stuff in January, and then decide, this is just hypothetical, if we decide we want to pursue allowing the Co-op and other carryout food establishments to sell beer and wine, what would happen to the bill we have endorsed? If we pass this resolution, what will happen to that bill? Will we look bad? And then another part of the question is, is there any reason we couldn't come back next year for that change?
To the first point, the, if we went forward and had the sunset provision removed of this particular bill.
Yes.
And then we went to the General Assembly and said, and we would also like to remove the kind of Tacoma Park-specific restrictions on off-sale beer and wine carryout, I don't think it would look bad, and it would not affect this bill. It would simply kind of make it move, but that's.
Yes, all right. So then the extension of that is if we come back a year from now, it wouldn't be a problem?
That's right. I think that the, one thing that I have heard on a regular basis for years from the General Assembly and from the Montgomery delegation, is that the closer that we are to what Montgomery County provides in general, the more they like it.
Yeah, okay. So my, did you want to say something?
You can just add just a clarification, but Montgomery County doesn't allow liquor sales, or beer and wine sales from grocery stores, does it?
Yeah.
Yes.
One outlet per, for the county of a chain.
Oh, okay.
So for instance, you can go to Snyder's, because there's only one store.
Got it.
But if you go to Safeway, there are multiple stores in the county, and one of them, I have no idea which.
So the Co-op now only have one entity, and the county would?
Yeah. So my position then is that I support moving forward with the resolution as.
Drafted.
Jeez, what's the word?
Drafted?
It's drafted.
No, it was.
As moved.
Moved. Okay. And I have not been drinking too much. But I propose, I support moving forward with the resolution as moved and seconded, and then with a discussion in January or whenever of moving toward the county system, I guess I would put it, and allowing beer and wine off-sales by food establishments. But I guess that's not quite the county thing either. You don't have to be a food establishment to sell beer and wine. It can be a freestanding store.
Yes.
So I guess what I'm.
And there's not a distinction in the classes?
There isn't a distinction. So, yeah, if we allowed the Co-op, just using them as a specific example, if we allowed them to sell beer and wine, would we allow freestanding beer and wine stores that don't sell food?
That, that is my understanding, that there's not a way to distinguish that. And so you get one, you get them all.
Okay. Well, nonetheless, I would like to, my position would be to support this resolution, and then to have that discussion perhaps with a public hearing in January.
And three colleagues want a second. Go around on this. Before I go to them, I'll just say that I'm in support of the resolution as moved. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I would remind my colleagues that our experience with some establishments where, that have consumption of alcoholic beverages on premises have not all been positive. We have had some problems in some of those establishments and that was one of the things that led us to ask for this sunset in the beginning. And I would just suggest that some of the negative things that we have seen around our borders will be invited in, should we allow off-sale, could potentially be occurring here if we allow for the sale of, for consumption off-site. The, it just seems to me that the prudent thing is to move with caution. I don't see a downside to extending the sunset. And for that reason, I would move that we extend the sunset for three years.
So you're moving a modification.
You can't move until we get rid of this motion.
Well, he can make an amendment.
He can move an amendment. Is there a second to the amendment? Hearing no second to the amendment, we'll continue discussion on the motion. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
I want to make sure we're, if we pass this resolution, we are removing the sunset. Is that correct?
We're requesting that the state legislature remove the sunset.
Sorry. I'm sorry, state legislature. Okay, so, okay. All right. I just, I want to make sure.
Which is not a 100% sure thing.
Yes, it certainly isn't.
But if you wanted to leave in, you could have said second.
All right. I just, I want to make sure that's what I was going to vote for.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. So if we move the resolution tonight, could you just explain to me, are we making it impossible for ourselves to have the issue of the Co-op reconsidered for this legislative session? In other words, do we have to take action tonight to make it possible for us to get a bill introduced in this session?
We may already be late.
This particular bill doesn't have anything to do with it. If the council thinks it may wish to move forward during this General Assembly session with a more liberal approach to licenses, then it would be good to get some direction soon so that I could at least start communicating that to the Montgomery delegation and others. I do not know if they would accept it as a late-filed bill to move forward. Because it's something that gets closer to the Montgomery County provisions, we may get some deference to allow that as a late-filed bill. Then it would have to have a resolution by the council in January. And if the council supported it, fine, the bill would be there. If the council didn't support it, we'd have to withdraw the bill. I do not have any idea how difficult it might be to get the late-filed bill.
I mean, the concern that I have is that the establishment selling beer and wine will open in Busboys and Poets within the next year. And once customers get used to a new habit, they've got a new habit. They go there to buy their beer and wine, to go there to buy their eggs and milk, and that's that. So a 30% drop in sales, even if subsequently rectified, stays a 15% drop in sales. So, you know, I hear the issue we heard earlier tonight about the viability. I, and I guess I wish we knew for certain whether, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, whether the language in the state law, whether there's language in state law that is specific to grocery stores that could allow us to create some sort of amendment that would open the door to the Co-op without opening the door to all liquor-wine permit establishments. And I guess to some extent, my, what I would like to, the motion I would like to make is I would like to motion to postpone a vote on this issue until our December 9th meeting, so that we could get just clarity on that one question, unless we already have it.
Okay. On this particular item, which is the Class B on and off-sale, I would strongly recommend a vote on it tonight, because the public hearing on it is on December 2nd. For something different, if it's related to a more general liberalization or some other kind of carve-out in some way for the Co-op, that's going to take some work. I would appreciate direction sooner rather than later, so that I could talk to folks in the General Assembly, if there's direction about how to proceed. Otherwise, we'll just deal with it in January as best we can.
Okay. I withdraw the amendment. But I do just, I find myself hating that we're at the point of doing things at the very last minute. There's no chance for us to actually really address this issue, but we've got one choice. And that's, that's a bad situation to be in as a council.
Well, this problem only just came to us in the last week or two.
The sunsetting of this legislation?
No, this is different.
Sure.
Right. The issue about the Co-op, if it had been addressed and brought up as part of the discussion on priorities going forward in terms of legislation, it could have gotten it in as a local bill request before October.
Right. But my point is, we're talking about asking the state legislature to pass a bill on our behalf, and the option to decide what the content of that request is to the legislature, we have exactly one meeting to decide that.
That's the cause, bro.
No, no, I'm not referring to the Co-op. I'm saying, we, as a council, are going to speak to the legislature. We're asking them to pass this bill. We're starting with the hearing with the county, I mean, I'm sorry, with the Montgomery County delegation, right, on December 2nd? Is that right? Is that the next meeting?
This is, yes, just about the sunset provision.
Is it, right. And so the only decision that we can make is to move it forward so that that can happen or not, as opposed to being able to have an actual open discussion about what liquor law do we want the delegation, county delegation, to take up on our behalf.
Can we just vote on this, on the question about the sunset? Get that taken care of, and then deal with the question that's been raised here about the Co-op, because they're separate issues. We're co-mingling the discussion, it's confusing.
Well, they're not separate issues. They're both issues regarding how state liquor laws affect Tacoma Park. I mean, that is the, the issue on the table is our liquor permitting in Tacoma Park.
But the thing for sunset.
But we, as a council, don't have to, don't have to say, well, we're only going to let ourselves focus on this little tiny question. The question, a question that in fact has been of no relevance to businesses in Tacoma Park for two years. That's literally how important it is, that not a single Tacoma Park business has cared about this law. So we're talking about going to the state delegation and asking them to do the city a favor to pass a law to eliminate or change the sunset. That has made no impact to any business in the city for two years, while we've had a business come to us and say they see this as a question of viability for their future. My point is just that by scheduling this at the last minute, we don't, we can't, in advance of any hearing by the county delegation, have a discussion of anything else we might want to cover. have a discussion of anything else we might want to cover in time for that, in time for this legislative session.
So are you proposing that we table it?
No, I'm not.
Can we, I have my light on.
Yeah. Just let me say that, just a couple of things as you were talking. One thing is that with this question before us on this resolution, even if we were to want to lump a request to do something as a different alcohol law, the state, the state legislature likes to have single purpose bills where you don't mix things in so that it would probably be separate bills no matter what. And this is something that, is something that is part of the legislative package and process that we talked about in terms of what were things that the council wanted to do when we had that general discussion. And if I recall correctly, one of them was that this sunset bill was going to be something that we were going to have to deal with. So it was put on this agenda. And the reason that the co-op piece came up is because representatives from the co-op approached myself and Councilmember Daniels Cohen a week ago and said this was of prime concern and interest. So it's a, it's a late arising question that if we want to deal with, we can try and deal with as a late filed bill. I think they're separate. And I'm not sure that conflating them and saying, you know, we're not having an overall alcohol policy discussion, it's not anything that we've raised as a desire to have. We can do it, but it hasn't come up to this point, therefore, we haven't had it. So I would encourage us to dispense with the resolution that's on the table. And if we want to make a request to staff to investigate the possibilities of coming up with another bill that would be a late filed bill, we can give that direction to staff tonight, and that process can start. Councilmember Grimes.
Before joining the council two years ago, I served, including a few months into my council tenure, for three or four years, I don't remember, on the board of the old Tacoma Business Association. My recollection is that Tacoma Park passed this bill in the first place as a distorted version of what was asked of the council. This was initiated by the co-op, is my recollection. Co-op talked about selling organic beers and wines, came to the city, I, just as off my recollection, through the Business Association and maybe directly, and asked for permission to do this. And the council enacted a distorted version of the request by not allowing the co-op, but instead coming up with the idea of allowing beer and wine to be sold only by restaurants with licenses for on-sales. So I do see the question, as Councilmember Mail does, as mixed together. Nonetheless, I don't see any hurry to reconsider whether establishments other than restaurants with licenses for on-sale should be allowed to sell beer and wine. I would support moving forward with this resolution, making these inquiries about the possibilities in state law. It can be done now, but in order to have sufficient time for public comment, given that we are, as some of my colleagues have mentioned, making what would be a significant change citywide, I suspect that we'll have to defer any action on a change to the fundamental law, other than moving the sunset, that is, for another year. And I don't have a huge problem with making the co-op wait for another year. We can do something that is well thought out and has plenty of public notice and opportunity for comment. But I would do the investigations now to see what we come up with.
Councilmember Schultz.
I turned off my light.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Ah, thank you, Mayor. I want to make sure, we're talking apples and oranges. Sunset is an apple, the co-op is an orange.
Correct.
Okay, number one.
It's an organic orange. It's an organic orange.
An organic orange, correct. Sorry, sorry, co-op. Things have changed in the last three years. There wasn't a big hole in the corner of Carroll Avenue and Maple Avenue in the District of Columbia that's going to open another organic restaurant, not restaurant, food store. That's a huge change for the co-op, which is, you know, it's a tiny little grocery store trying to hold its own. I'm in favor of eliminating the sunset, but I also want to put, do what we have to as quickly as possible for the co-op to be allowed to sell off sale. They're not talking on sale. They're not talking, sitting around a table in the co-op all afternoon drinking wine. They're just talking about selling beer and wine off sale. So, and I don't want to see them go out of business either. I think they had to close their other, their other co-op in Silver Spring. I'm not sure.
They closed it.
The one on Grub Road, right?
They just closed it.
It's closed. The community is looking into the possibility of providing it independently of the TPS's co-op.
Really? Okay, yeah. So, you know, I want to support any business in Tacoma Park that's trying to stay afloat.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'd like to, I'd like to call the question on the, on the motion that's on the force at the present time.
Okay. Question's been called. We haven't had public comment. Let me just ask.
What?
Is there any public comment on this? No, we had it, we had it earlier. That's right, sorry. Change in format, change in format. Good.
But you were going to do a second round right before the voting. Isn't that the standard?
Only, no.
No.
Only if there's a significant amendment, I thought, or a significant change in...
We'll have some flexibility, but we're not going to automatically call for it.
Oh.
So, the question's been called. It's a resolution, so voice vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. I count six in favor, one opposed. Now, how about a straw poll on whether we want staff to investigate the feasibility of potentially filing a late filed bill to deal with the co-op? We would have to discuss it in January, and it would probably have to be broader than just the co-op. So, all those in favor of asking staff to do some investigation, please raise a hand. All those opposed, six to one. If the staff would please make some inquiries, and we will see what we can come back to in January.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. You said it probably will have to be broader than the co-op, but I would like the staff to evaluate whether it could be tailored to...
It's certainly understood.
So, okay.
Yep. That's the hope. All right. Thank you.
I'm going to pull that one on you sometime.
We now have the consent agenda with the six items, and I'll just note that, or seven items, and I'll just note that I've noted to the clerk that we probably want to move the comments on the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting, not as a separate item, but as something as part of general public comments. And so we will do that next time. So all those, does somebody want to move the consent agenda?
So move.
And it's, well, I'll take one of those as a move, and one as a second. I'll take Councilmember Mail move, and Councilmember Smith second it. All those in, let's see, it's a, we need a roll call vote because there's single reading ordinances on there. Will the clerk please call or roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. So there are four yeses and three ayes.
That's a good one.
We will now, we have two, I think, short work session items. The city manager's quarterly activities report and a legislative update, which we've in some ways done part of. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think all of you all have the quarterly report. Again, this is the quarterly report for the first quarter of fiscal year 14, which covers from June 30 to September 30 of this calendar year. That is the first quarter of fiscal year 14. The document, I'll try to summarize it as best I can. In short, through the first quarter, we've got general fund revenues, which again is our primary revenue source in the city, at about 23% of what we budgeted for fiscal year 14. So again, if you think about this in quarters, you'd want to see somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 25% for your revenues. And we indeed do see that. Important to note again that our revenues are lumpy in the sense that we get property tax revenue in October and in January. And so we saw, as of October 15, I believe, a significant chunk of our property tax revenue come in, which was about, which gets us to roughly about 50% of what we think our property tax revenue for the year is going to be. So we're on target as relates to a significant source of revenue for the city. On the expenditure side, we are at roughly about 19% of the budgeted amount. So again, we are close to what we would expect. I think some of those expenses in terms of being a little bit less than 25% mostly has to do with just how we, again, sort of the cyclical nature of some of our expenditures. And so as such, and I think there's a statement in the first, first page of my report, that I see no great concern in terms of the current financial position of the city based upon our expected revenues and our actual revenues and our expected expenditures and our actual expenditures. The rest of the cover page talks a little bit about, from a status perspective, some of the actual accomplishments and initiatives that city staff have been working on through the first quarter of the fiscal year, just highlighting a few of those. Again, many of these things we've already heard about. Food waste collection, the pilot program continued. The average weight of food waste was 13 pounds per household. Obviously, we talked a little bit about expanding that program going forward. We got conditionally awarded $2.3 million in funding from the Reach on Transportation Planning Board for the Flower Avenue, Green Street, and Ethan Allen Gateway Project in the first quarter. And then obviously, in terms of economic development, economic sustainable community, we continued to try to make progress on municipal tax duplication. We had a number of meetings with the Montgomery Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League, as well as going to a Government Operations Committee meeting in July, as well as continuing to talk to Joyce Newmeyer from Washington and Venice Hospital relative to their certificate of need that they submitted the first week of October. So we had some additional conversations around that. I'll just point out just a few factoids in the actual documents themselves. I'll leave you all to look at the document and ask any questions. On page 25, in the Housing and Community Development section, again, is sort of referenced what I think is a handy chart for projects in terms of current stage and status. And it is something that I think going forward, you will start to see more replicable in some of our other departments, because I think it's a handy guide towards having not only us on the accountability side, but everyone else in terms of where we are with certain projects, what sort of the current status is. On page 37, which talks a little bit about some of our library activities, we talk a little bit about Sunday activity. I know that was a new initiative that was started really in the, in the final quarter of the last fiscal year and first quarter of this year. It provides, I think, some good trending information. In general, as what we'd like to see, we're generally seeing activity on Sundays increase over time. I think as people have learned about Sunday hours and we've started to get some additional programming on Sundays, we're starting to see increased use of the library on Sundays, which is, I think, a great stat going forward. Finally, on page 42 and 43, we have some police-related information. I know that we historically have some information about crime in general, which I think is on page 44. It talks about our quarter compared to previous year's first quarter information in terms of total crime statistics. Again, I think the general theme even from the last quarter was that total crime in general has been decreasing in terms of incidents. However, we do have some hotspot areas and some hotspot crimes, in particular burglaries, that have been ticking up recently in terms of account. It's still, in terms of where we are relative to some of our previous years, we're still within, I think, that confidence interval in terms of numbers. But obviously, any increase in crime is something that we need to be mindful of. On pages 42 and 43, just a few other small data points around, as we think a little bit about burglaries. 42 is a map of burglaries that have been mapped by the police department, not just in Tacoma Park, but really all over our, some of our immediate areas. I think the purpose of this is to say that we are dealing in a complex regional crime map. You do not see a significant number of burglaries strictly targeted in Tacoma Park. They really are spread across our immediate area, which I think would be expected. And I think that it's important to remember that we do touch really three jurisdictions, Prince George's County, unincorporated Montgomery County, and the District of Columbia. And as this map sort of shows, we've got sort of an even distribution of potential burglaries across the, across the immediate area. Page 43, there's some relative aspect in terms of crime stats. And again, I am mindful, this is 2012 information. We are going to be getting 2013 information, and I'll be sending that along to the council. But I did want to provide just some relativity in terms of what some of our other immediate, either similar jurisdictions or immediate neighbors are seeing in terms of percentages. I think the best way, obviously, to look at this information is percentages, because you've got different amounts of residents and households in each one of these areas. But in general, I think, in terms of burglaries as an example, I think you see a similar percentage, except if you're in green belt, in 2012. And I will ask the police chief to come up and talk about just some of the efforts that I know that they've been taking relative to crime in general and burglaries in specific.
Yeah, if you look at that chart, and let me just...
They're, just so everybody's not confused, it says quarter one, but it's actually for crime reporting statistics. It's actually quarter three, it's quarter three, because we have to go by calendar year for the uniform crime reports.
Same period of time.
Same period of time. It's July to September. But it's, for, you know, the FBI's uniform crime reports, it is a yearly statistic. So just keep that in mind. The other thing that I, I have Andrew Cucciaro and Michelle Holmes from CID here to answer any questions that I might not be able to. The other thing that we, the reason you don't have the 2013 comparison to the other jurisdictions is because they don't necessarily keep them. They, some of the smaller jurisdictions don't do quarterlies. The larger jurisdictions like Montgomery County are probably typically three months behind on getting them out, and they don't release their nonofficial data until it's official. So it may be some time before we can get those stats from them. That being said, we're still below our five year high, and we're still below our five year average as far as burglaries, but we're quickly approaching it. Now, last year was sort of an aberration. If you look at the statistics for the region, almost everybody had a drop, and it was sort of an unexplained drop. We don't know why. But, so last year is really not a good, good year to use as a trend when we're looking at a five year trend, for whatever reason it dropped. The other thing that we found was last year, we made some arrests that we got very lucky. There were two groups of individuals that were doing, two loosely connected groups of individuals that were doing most of the burglaries in the city. And when we arrested both of those groups, they abruptly stopped. This year, we're, we have probably, we've made seven arrests, and we still have two or three suspects that we've identified that we haven't been able to actually charge at this point. But it's just, they keep making them as fast as we arrest them. So it's not the same number of, same types of groups. The other ones were coming in from outside the city, in groups of four or five, stolen cars, things like that last year. This year, it's people on foot, and we believe probably some people that live in the city that are familiar with it and grew up in the city that are committing some of these crimes. We've also had, the one statistic that floors me is that still over half of these burglaries, and I...
I think it was a 50 something percent, right?
Over half of them are unlocked homes, unsecured homes. And we just don't seem to get the message out. The other issue is that people will traditionally report suspicious activity after the fact, not before or when it's happening. I'll give you a couple of examples that highlight it. On one burglary, on Richie, there was a neighbor that saw some people in a backyard, did not call the police, but did confront them. And they said, "Could I help you?" And they said, "Could I help you?" And the reply was, "No, we got everything we needed." And it wasn't until the next day that the report was taken that, when we did our canvas, we found out that occurred. So that's just a tip, that's not unusual. We had the last burglary on Sycamore. That trend has slowed drastically. It has slowed drastically. But we had a burglary on Sycamore last week. Again, no sign of forced entry. But while the officers were on the scene, somebody called in. We had two anonymous tips saying that they saw somebody acting suspicious in the neighborhood, but didn't call. And they still didn't leave their names. So you might have seen the announcement we put out, trying to get some people to step up and give us their information, because we have some suspects. We'd like them to look at a photo array. Additionally, we have another burglary where the, basically, the witness can identify one of the suspects and has elected not to cooperate. So these are the types of things that we're facing at this point. But we are down. I will tell you that we have had plainclothes units on the scene. In fact, I won't mention any names, but it might be the Comptroller of Maryland, actually confronted one of our plainclothes guys that he thought was acting suspiciously. So, you know, somebody's learning to, I don't recommend that people go out and confront people, but at least call us and let us know. There's nothing insignificant. There's nothing that we don't want them to report to us. Let us determine if it's insignificant or not. One of the things that these burglars are doing is, especially this time of year, when you have leaves on the side of the road, or during the summer, when, you know, people want to go around looking for yard work and grass cutting, they'll use that as a ruse. And that's what their excuse is, whether just knocking on doors to see if somebody needs some yard work done. Again, call us, and we'll determine if they're legitimately or not. But I'd like to open it up to some questions.
Do they have the issue of people offering to do yard work who are casing the term? What do they, what do those people do if the homeowner says yes? Do they do the work?
You know, I don't think it's ever gotten that far. So, I mean, it's usually after the fact, usually when the police stop, "Oh, I was just looking for yard work," or something like that. Or if somebody answers the door. Because what they're looking for is they'll knock on the door first to see if anyone's home. If there's no one home, that's when they're going to determine to break in or not. They'll go around the house. If somebody answers the door, that's their, you know, they're selling magazines, I'm doing yard work, whatever. They have, they have to come up with a ruse for their being there.
Questions?
Do you know what the population of Silver Spring Third District is?
Not off, it's probably 120,000.
If you divide the county by six, it's like 170,000.
Well, it's, you can't really, yeah, it's, the way the Silver Spring District is now, it goes from Briggs-Cheney Road, I mean, from the county line at Howard County, sort of a sliver that comes all the way down into Silver Spring. If you look at the percentage, though, of burglaries for that populate, of the total crime, it's a little higher than us. I will give you an example. Our investigators developed a suspect in burglary that really looked good for our burglaries. We gave that to Silver Spring, because they were good for Silver Spring burglaries. They closed 42 burglaries with this individual. Of course, none of them were in Tacoma Park, but it was our tip, our case. So, you know, one prolific burglar, in this case, did 42 burglaries that they charged him with.
You do remind me of a point that you've heard before, which is that we get reports of crimes, but we don't get reports of closures. I don't know what you can put out fruitfully on that front, but...
Well, actually, we do, and I don't know if you have the updated numbers...
Maybe I missed a, I missed a adverb there. We get frequent reports of, or not just have frequent reports of crimes, but we don't get frequent reports of crimes.
I will try to answer that question, which is, going forward, we do need to do a better job of advertising our successes.
Right.
And I will take that as a criticism all day, if I can get away with it. So please continue to criticize me for not talking about the good things that we're doing for the Police Department.
And nationwide, I think burglaries, the closure rate's about 8%. And it smacked me in the back of the head if I'm wrong. We're still running around 40%. And we were at 50% last year, so. And again, when we made those arrests last year, burglaries abruptly stopped. So we didn't charge them with every one of those burglaries, so we couldn't close every case, because we couldn't necessarily develop enough evidence. But they, you know, just from anecdotally, they stopped, so we can guess that they were responsible. But we have been hitting it hard with plainclothes officers, bike officers, and patrol.
The weekly crime reports that Kathy sends out use to contain information on traffic stops and where deployments are details, I think is the word that you typically use, were set up for stop sign and other kinds of vehicular infractions were trying to be deterred. My constituents felt that that was very useful information, because it let them, it gave them the sense that you guys were doing your work in their particular neighborhood at a particular time. Because a lot of, most of the time, you're doing your work, and people don't notice because they're not home, or they're asleep, or they're just, you know, can't, or not, just not looking out their front door at the time.
Right.
And that sort of thing. And so I think the lack of that information is unfortunate. I think it would be very helpful to be able to have that data.
We actually have the data, and we were, I think it was going in our e-news, and then it was, the format was changed. But I think we can either address it either through our weekly report, or Kathy can, you know, work with Urban and get the...
Yeah, I think we were going to be talking about how we get some of this information out in a better way, so I think we've got a meeting set up to talk about some of it.
And frankly, I'd love to see some of that just posted on the webpage, so people can read it on their own, and it's there.
One way or the other, I think it would really, really, it would be very great.
Yeah, we didn't stop capturing the data. We still have it, so, and we'll find a way of getting it out.
Okay. Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks for your presentation. Excuse me. It seems like the table broken down by crime, you know, the crime rates, having a comparable statistic for, you know, whatever you call them, resolution of those, you know, by major crime type would be really helpful. And whether that needs to be quarterly, or honestly, you know, whether it could be annual reporting. I wanted to ask about this, the speed camera quarterly report indicates a 50% increase over the quarter last year in total citations. That's 8,000 up to, now to 12,000?
It's actually about 5,000 more citations this quarter, over last year. And that's primarily due to the speed camera corridors and putting the cameras more where there's speeders and where there's a need on New Hampshire Avenue. The other issue was also the pulling that traffic light out at Sligo Creek in New Hampshire. Actually, you know, anecdotally, because I don't have all the data on it, I could tell you that we've heard some more accidents going out because of the lane shifts and everything else, but they're still minor. But consistently, people aren't getting the message yet on New Hampshire Avenue to slow down. So, yeah, we've seen a large increase there.
David, you, at some point in the last year, gave us some data on the accident rates?
Yeah, that should be in there. That hasn't changed drastically from last year.
I didn't see them in here, but I think just at some point in the next year, in your annual report, it'd be great to have sort of an overall, you know, in our speed zones, you know, what's your, some sort of before-after trend data?
Yeah, I apologize. We have that information. I summarized it, because I didn't know if we wanted to separate it out. It's in the, really the last sentence of the first paragraph, but it's summarized for really all the locations, saying that there were a total of 423 collisions, sort of prior to camera installation. And then in 2012, there were 16 collisions.
Thank you. That's great. I hadn't missed that. And you don't have to apologize for not, you know, putting it out, or more visible, but I think that's a good number to just highlight in future communications the city does.
And actually, I'd like to do, I would like to do it a little bit more detailed in the annual report, because I think it does, it does show that we're not just out looking for a funding source. There really is a purpose behind this.
One other comment, sorry, Terry, just one last thing, that I have is with the overall city map that shows, in this case, the burglaries, you know, I don't know that your crime statistician would know better, but, you know, like a multi-year average that shows people, you know, these are the hotspots, you know, in terms of behavior, you know, anything like that, that shows a longer-term picture, so it starts looking less like individual dots and more like red to green areas. You guys have done some...
Well, we've done heat maps, and actually, we could, we actually have one. The heat maps are actually very good, and we can do it over a period. And just remember that the map that's included here is from crimereports.com, because we can't get timely data from the other jurisdictions.
Sure, yeah.
Now, the NCR, COG, will put out an annual crime report of all the COG members. And again, it's still apples and oranges, because the demographics are different, the geography's different. You know, Virginia has a moat, you know, from DC. We don't, you know, we have a sidewalk. And so there's a lot of differences, and I'm not picking on DC, but I mean, there's a lot of differences. You can walk from one place to the other here that you can't in Northern Virginia. And you'll look at Fairfax crime rate as half of what Montgomery County is compared to just, you know, Montgomery County, and then, you know, PG and the others. So the demographics and geography have a lot to do with it, and it's very hard to compare a two and a half square, or 2.4 square mile city with this type of density...
Sure.
...to some of these other jurisdictions. So we just have to take a look at what's going on around us.
And I was just thinking of a heat map of just the city.
Oh, absolutely. That's...
Multi-year heat map, that would be helpful.
And what I like to do is overlay, you know, where the offenders live as well, and you'll see a huge overlap, because they don't go far most of the time, depending on the type of crime.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels-Cullen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for blasting us out here and giving us, this is excellent report. I know this is something I want to see happen, and I know you're working on it, and it's going to be a while off, but the, but the police academy, the Citizen Police Academy, I'd really like to see that started back up again. It's just, I can't say how important it was for me to go through that. And it was in the middle of trying to be elected last time, so it's a big commitment, I know.
We are rebuilding the program, and many of you know why we're having to do what we're doing. But the program's being rebuilt. We are planning on doing it sometime next year. They are, the planners are meeting this next month to finalize some of the lesson plans and start moving that forward. And I'm glad you just, by saying academy, you just brought up one of the things. You'll see in the report, we have two vacancies right now for police officer, one from a resignation, one from a retirement. I anticipate we'll probably have one or two more maybe over the next couple of months. So we are trying to get two entry-level people, because we want to get some fresh people through the Montgomery County Academy. We're working hard to get some candidates through that, as well as we have some laterals in the pipeline. The emergency manager has been hired.
Yay!
He is, he is, it's Ron Hardy. He's retired from Montgomery County, and he actually officially starts probably in another week or so, part-time, part-time, because he's got another job, and he's going to be doing both. But he was, he was actually here earlier today getting up and running. So he's hitting the ground running, and we'll move forward with that. So he'll be getting to know most of the people here very shortly.
He may need to start working on Wednesday, because they're talking about some snow, maybe, so.
Yeah, I don't see a tenth of an inch of ice as being a super bad emergency, but we'll...
But the other, this is another little thing. What would it take for us to at least post our speed limit at 25? I would like to see it posted at 15, oh, by the way.
Well, here's, here's the issue. The city has a prima facie speed limit of 25 miles an hour under city code, but, and yes, could we stop, I mean, actually, you know, you probably do. She probably writes more tickets as sergeant detectives as the rest of the patrol force. But the reality of it is that it's, we can enforce it, but the citations are city citations. It comes with no points, no penalty for not paying. There's really no teeth in it. So in order for us to write it on a state citation where you get points, it's a driving record, it's the prima facie speed limit is 30 miles an hour.
Yeah.
Which, you know, goes back to the 1950s, and that's something that maybe, you know, that some legislation that really does need to be changed. And in urban areas, the prima facie speed limit should probably be 25. It is in the District of Columbia, and it probably should be here.
That 5 miles an hour actually does make a big difference. I'm also going on a campaign about pedestrian, what do I say, proper pedestrian behavior and proper stopping at crosswalks, because I'm surprised more people haven't been hit.
Well, part of, part of the reason that you've seen a reduction in pedestrian collisions in the city is the engineering in some of the major areas where we've had it. You know, you put that big picket fence across New Hampshire Avenue.
Yeah.
That really, engineering is really the key, because if people are not really concerned about serious bodily injury or death, you know, us writing them a ticket's probably not going to make a whole lot of difference. So the best thing we can do is engineer the intersections better, so that they can't cross at places like that. Where I'm surprised no one's been hit is University Boulevard on the Tacoma Park side, where you've got cut-throughs with no lights and crosswalks, and people, you know, don't even see the pedestrians until they're walking out. So I agree with you. 30 miles an hour is ridiculous when you've got state roads in the city that have a 25 mile an hour speed limit posted, but the residential streets are 30, under the state law.
Yeah, I, and what was I going to say, the other thing? I've had a couple of constituents say they were crossing at a crosswalk, and some car jumped the yellow line, came around the two cars that had stopped and almost hit her. That was one of them, and, you know, the other one was, they went around the other way. I don't know how to educate people, you know, they're not going to get there any faster.
Well, and we do have, actually, one of the things we're trying to do right now is Tacoma Park has never really taken advantage of the grant process through Maryland State highways. There is some grant money for enforcement that's available. We're probably too late for this year, because I just ran into the person that was in charge of the grants, and she was the one who took me aside and said, "Why don't you guys participate?" I said, "I don't know." I don't know why, because, you know, as far as I know, we did or didn't. So now that we're in touch with them, hopefully, we'll get some money next year to do some education and some enforcement. I mean, we can do that now, but I'd like to be able to ramp it up a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, because I know some of the folks who are in here from a country that used walk across the street, I just, I go, "Oh, my God," because they're just, you know...
Doesn't matter who's at fault.
Yeah.
The pedestrians always lose or something.
Yeah, the pedestrian will always lose. It's like, it's like taking a knife to a gun battle. You don't want to go up against an automobile if you're a person. It will hurt you.
Excuse me.
So, okay, cool.
Councilmember Siemens gets the last word.
Just real quick, I'd like to voice support for Councilmember Mayo's request for accident statistics before camera installation and afterwards. And it's definitely needed by camera, not, not just a general summary. So thank you.
Good. Thanks, Chief. Do you have anything else? Okay, well, move to the last item, which is legislative update.
Thank you. Before you, are items that are just local or by county bills that are being considered and have public hearings scheduled for either December 2nd or December 4th, so it's not kind of a larger legislative discussion that we'll have to have again. So before you are a number of, I attached a list of the bills that are listed, but I've summarized them into ones that I think are particularly important to Tacoma Park or is kind of grouped. The first are two bills that have to do with WSSC. They, I think, are reacting to Montgomery County's changed laws on trees in the right-of-way and want to make sure that they are exempt from any kind of local regulation in repairing their lines that might affect trees. On kind of on the general sense that we don't want to have our authority preempted, I think we should oppose these bills. That would be consistent with council direction in the past. In talking with the Director of Public Works, WSSC works well with us when it comes to trees and the impacts on trees in the right-of-way. We don't have a memorandum of understanding with them, but we do have an understanding with them, so that they contact us, they go out with the arborist, they share... with them, so that they contact us, they go out with the arborist, they share with us their plans before they actually act. And I don't want to have them move away from that, because they get an exemption in state law. So, my recommendation would be that we be consistent with past council views that we would oppose these. The next is one in, the chief is still here, okay, about AEDs and police vehicles. I don't know that we need to get into it, but it is an unfunded mandate that's relatively expensive for us. Not to say that we wouldn't appreciate having AEDs in many of our vehicles, but to have that required, we would oppose. Basically, because we generally oppose unfunded mandates. The third recommendation that I have is that we don't take a position on any of the many alcoholic beverage bills that are listed, other than the one that we discussed earlier and the direction that you gave earlier. We have, many of these are specific to Kensington, or specific to performing arts facilities over X size, or some very specific places in the county that aren't in Tacoma Park. The one that I thought was a little bit unusual was the idea that you could get a liquor license to be able to consume beer and wine in beauty salons. So, that's, we've not had action on that. There may be a resolution related to that, but...
They should change that to barber shops, too.
Apparently, I think it is. I think actually the term, the definition, it covers both, but my image, I did laugh when I first saw this, I just have to say.
You use the same term?
I'm going to the beauty salon and get ripped.
There you go. I'm open to any of your thoughts on any of these bills. I've only identified the position that I'm aware of from your past action, but whatever you'd like to give direction to me, I'd appreciate.
Let me just say that I found myself agreeing with all of the positions that you recommended.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
I would agree with everything you said this evening. But my question, if the bill for allowing alcohol in beauty salons passes, how would it impact Tacoma Park?
It would be allowed, because it's not carryout. So you're not going to go in and, you know, get your hair cut and get to buy a six-pack.
Okay, so you just, are there certain hours that the alcohol could be served, or...
You know, I will look at the law again. There seemed to be some variation on that. I think in general, it was geared towards special event nights, when you come in and have a, you know, kind of a spa night and have some wine with it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
I'm just curious, Chief Goldberg, do you have any kind of estimate of the demand for defibrillators? How often is there a situation where having one in the vehicle would have made any difference?
None. This actually originated, same person sponsored the bill, same delegate, in 2007 to 2009. I was opposed to it as for chief manager for Montgomery County. It was an unfunded mandate at the time. At that time, it was tied to tasers, and then, once that was, that was debunked...
Do you use a taser for defibrillation?
Well, actually, that was, I actually testified at the general, at the committee in Annapolis, that if the taser can stop your heart, it could start it, and we could save a lot of money. But the reality of it is that, once that was, the bill was amended by the sponsor, the bill was amended to require all Montgomery County police vehicles to have an AED, which includes bicycles and everything else. And then, you know, again, they were using a quote of about $900 per car, but that's, that was a quote from a New Jersey contract that Montgomery County is using a different defibrillator, and they've standardized across fire rescue and police, in order for training and equipment purposes. And it's about twice that. So you're looking about $1,800 to $2,000 per vehicle that it would be required. And the reality is, in cases where the person is a flatline, as in most cases, when we deal with them and they code, and they stop, they go into cardiac arrest, the automatic defibrillators don't work on them. They have to have some sort of heartbeat irregular. It's got to be, it's got to be a defibrillation, not a flatline and a systole. So, I'm not saying they're bad. We do support them. I think they're a good thing. But the better bang for the buck is make sure there are public buildings and nursing homes and places where there's a venue where there's a likelihood they'll be used and somebody can grab it and use it, not necessarily in the back of a police car.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Grimes. Oh, sorry, Mayo.
What's the, I'm just curious about the Beer Festival legislation?
Yeah, that was actually kind of interesting, and that could apply here, but it's basically, if there were some kind of a festival that got that license, it would be a temporary festival. There's similar kinds of laws right now, licenses for certain things at farmers' markets and certain things at different kinds of, you know, fairs and different kinds of things. So this is just one in a list of the kinds of activities that they could have. So that could occur here.
Okay. And just, no, I won't even ask it, never mind. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? You got what you need?
I got, I have, is there a consensus on the positions that were outlined here?
Does anybody disagree with the positions outlined?
No, but I have a question about one of the other bills.
Oh, well, last chance.
I'm curious about, I just noticed this archery hunting safety zone, Eric Lutke. There was just an incident on, I guess it was in Tacoma Park. What is that bill?
I think it's, it's very similar to the past one, which prohibits the archery within 150 yards of residents and that kind of thing.
250 of a school? I think it was feet, though, not yards.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the new bill is. I know they were trying to reduce the distance from like 150 yards to 75.
It's very similar to the past one, but it didn't...
Isn't it yards, not feet?
Yeah. Now, for the county weapons law, because it's really not, believe me, after the incident the other day, I've done a lot of research, and I already was familiar with some of it. Right now, it's 150 yards from an occupied dwelling or residence that were likely to be occupied, without the permission of the owner. So if you had your neighbor said, "Yeah, it's fine if you go bow hunting in your backyard, you legally can do it," with their permission. I think they were trying to reduce the distance for archery, but I think...
It may have been from 150 to 125, but it was very similar.
Okay, good enough. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, just a reminder, we are not meeting next week, and we have a meeting two weeks from tonight with the hospital, and it's solely with the hospital, and it starts at 7:00.
And just to encourage people to look at the newsletter that will be coming out, there's a lot of background information on the hospital, so I encourage them to read that before the hearing on the 9th.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it!